And I don't want to pay to repair it and then have to keep doing that.
Yeah.
Well, so did the sheriff just start trading in aged out vehicles in 2022? And that's why we're not, we don't have them trickling down to other departments anymore?
I, I honestly don't know why.
We'll ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Work of District Court. Oh, no. How are you today?
Oh, good. How are you guys?
Good.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. Mine is pretty cut and dry, really. I was able to, through my line items, without doing any, any extra in staff salaries or anything, I was able to cut the amount that you requested out of my line items. The only caveat to that is I have a couple statutory requirements. That I did cut money out of those, just looking at the last couple of years. I believe this will be fine, but those are things that are, you can never judge. So trials, appeals, those kind of things, we can guess the best we can, but you never know how many or how little we're going to have this year. I didn't have very many appeal transcripts we had to pay for. So I'm going to have quite a chunk that I will turn back to the general fund at the end of this fiscal year. Same with jury fees, I should probably return about $20,000 on that this year. But like I said, those are things that we just are, are a total shot in the dark, whether we need it or not. So I did cut some money out of those two line items, as well as all of my other basic line items in that budget. So as far as the judges' district court budget, again, the main line item there is a statutory requirement for court appointed internal fees. I did cut a couple thousand dollars out of that, and I also cut 3,000 out of my bailiff salaries. Again, I haven't used the amount that we, because they are paid hourly when they're here only, obviously. So I haven't had to use the amount that I've requested the past couple of years. So I did cut out of that and was able to get to the requested amount on that line item as well.
So you're saying it's a light year, but you might need to ask for more money if it turns into?
Correct. And like I said, I did, I cut, I didn't cut much out of the court appointed attorney fees, because just looking at, I'm going to be pretty close to that when we get this next month's bills in. So that one I didn't cut much of. But as far as trials and appeals, I cut a good chunk out of those two. Thought that may be something that I would have to come back later and request an amendment to my budget. But I am returning more than half of this year's allotment back to the general fund that I did not use. So. Questions?
Fat in your budget, Stacy?
I do not have fat in my budget. I spend very little and I return what I don't use.
Any legislators asking about your budget before this session?
I don't think I spoke with anybody that asked me anything about my budget.
Me either. Any outstanding needs that you might need that are coming due, maybe not this year, but in the future? Just to understand what's happening.
I don't believe so. I think we have gotten, I, I do want to thank you that we're on the commission last year that gave me the, that was through 1% money, but gave me the shelving units for my, my storage. I meant to bring you pictures because it's amazing the difference it made and it really, long term, will, will suit us well. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You by far have the busiest office of all the clerks of district court that I mean, usually it's one staff member or two and you may see one person every hour or so. Yours is holy smokes.
Yeah, it's cooking all the time.
It is. And you'll see in the, in my revenue, I did add quite a chunk into our passports because our passport acceptance has gone through the roof. We do, we probably average 100 passports a month, but we have people come through the door to get passports for, so.
Who directs those 100 people up here?
I was going to say everyone stops at you guys' office, I'm sure. Yeah. Yes, there are. And we keep thinking everybody in the county's got to have them by now, but we also get a large number from Cheyenne because Cheyenne's post office does them and they do it by appointment only and they do it like once a week for an hour.
Oh, they're very helpful, aren't they?
Yeah, it takes like a month to even get an appointment over there to apply for a pass. So those people drive over here, we get people up from Colorado that come and do them here.
Borrowing your court duties, what is all your foot traffic? Is it passports and child support?
Passports, child support, restitution, payment, payment wise, that type of. Our foot traffic has kind of lightened a bit because we have gone to e-filing. So we don't get a lot of the attorney traffic right now. They still come up on occasion because they have to pick up hard copies because we haven't quite got the serving them master gap as far as e-filing, but that's our main foot traffic really is, has been passports, child support, restitution, you know, payment wise, that kind of people.
And your staffing level for the current time, is it adequate?
It is. It, I wouldn't be able to add anybody because I have no room to add anybody anyway. Not unless they sat at a desk like you two are sitting right now. Yeah. But yes, we are.
And you want them to keep liking each other so you don't want to?
That's true. I don't want them that close together. But yes, we are, we are adequate right now. Yep. And if I have any reserve in my, in my staffing budget, I would also like to offer it to Chelsea. If there's anything extra that could come out that would help her, I would be more than willing to do what I can as well. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Come on up, Kurt.
Good afternoon. We were able to, well, I was able to cut the requested amount out of the general fund budget. There was one thing I didn't notice while I was reviewing this last night. On the 1%, there's a 50,000 for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. That would be for our juvenile diversion program. We've got grants to cover that, so that can be zeroed out. We will not be requesting that this year.
Did we take that out, Amanda?
Yes.
We did. I think we're talking to you before.
Yeah, there was one that had been taken, one that hadn't, and I couldn't save the different changes last night.
Nope, that's perfectly right.
So there was one where it was still in there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, just on this one.
We'll get it taken.
Thank you. As for that, the budget out of the general fund, like Stacy, trials are the one I can't really predict. We settled out of trial in April, then if we had not settled out, we would have been in the red. I had witnesses in Alaska, a bunch in Texas, but luckily it settled. So we'll be returning the remainder of that balance. But that's the one that's the wild card that if I did have to come back and ask for money, that's where I would be coming back and asking for money. One homicide in our budget is basically tanked.
Oh, yeah.
For the year. So that is the most variable. We've cut down the interns substantially. I think when I took over, it was 100,000. I took 30 more off of that. I think 20 gives me enough to keep two solid paid interns for the year, which is both helpful and it gives us some options if people leave and I have more attorneys that may be willing to sign on with the office if we know are good fits. And I think that's, that's appropriate. We've been using less, using less paper because now the county buys the paper. So I think our office budget has gone down a good deal, so I'd cut some out of there as well. The round ranger is really salary and salary related. We have bar dues. We, we run pretty much through those between the state bar dues and the county attorneys association. I think that that covers it. The office supplies, I talked about the rules in criminal handbooks. That still hasn't been used at all because we can't order ahead with LexisNexis. We have to wait. So we, in the next week, I have to get those ordered and see if they're available. Otherwise, we just return it and then use up next year's. But they are, they are not easy to work with in that regard. So as to the salaries, I believe it's 30,000 we get. That is the only revenue really we bring in from the state that helps offset the salaries of the prosecutors, not staff, but prosecutors. As for an additional expense, I believe Miss, well, Jen told you about the Legion issue with the 112 building and our difficulties there. We did look at the Third Street building and the parking is really the issue. I'm in a lack thereof. And I'll be good at that. There's also issue, there's also other issues out there, but the increase was lowered. They've asked for a very substantial increase. They basically cut that in half. And how the rent for that building works, because crime victim witness is located over there as well. We basically, the county and crime victim witness with their own funds split the rent. So the increase would be for the county, $275.61. Since the total approximately a little over $33,000 for the entire year. That is not in my budget, but it is my, really my expense because both CBW and my discovery in civil attorneys are over there and they are my office. So it would not be sizable. We were getting, to be fair, heck of a deal from the Legion. And I think they have their own issues right now that are forcing them to reassess. But I don't think this increase is unreasonable and would ask you to go along with that.
What's $500 a month is what it's going up?
It is going up altogether, 532.85 a month. And then the county would be responsible every month for half a day. The.
Jennifer has her.
I guess.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to say the other portion of that, that is victim witness comes out of county match. And so Bailey has that, is aware of those numbers and has that in her requests also. I just wanted to point that out as while we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Other than that, I think we've, we were able to make the cuts again with everyone else. If there's anything I can do to help Chelsea out, nobody should be losing people. And her office is going to be flooded next year. So we'd be more than willing to help. If y'all could give you some guidance on how that would work exactly, but more than happy to help Chelsea out.
Thank you very much.
I know Pete's going to ask, so I won't.
Where would we find that?
I don't really think so.
Did somebody throw a piece of bacon over in the corner?
Well, I was told it was there. And I, from the person who said it out loud, that I had not talked to them. And so I was really interested to find out where it would be, the fat in the budget. In, in the general fund or 1% or both? Anywhere?
Anything. We got three to five percent.
Bacon in the corner.
So the, the one thing that we have been carrying over yearly is the case management software. We don't have any. I got rid of it when I got here because nobody liked how it worked. The system was called JD. Unfortunately, there is not a statewide case management system in the state of Wyoming. Everybody hobbles together in their own thing. We have been looking at a variant price. County attorney's offices pick them up and drop them all the time. It's difficult to find one that works. Tyler has one that is free, but the way it was constructed, this is before I got here. I, I sent Tyler, or felony paralegal to a class. It's, we don't have a lot of the options that would make it functional for our office and we don't really know how to get those added and it's just been frustrating. I think Tyler went a few months back to that class. We probably should have case management because where it really comes in is statistics to see how many cases you have juvenile, what is the disposition of them. We're doing that a bit for the juvenile grants, but for criminal, I really don't have any of those numbers except for domestic violence, sexual assault cases, because we have grants there as well. So we do track those, but it's cumbersome. It's by hand and I'm, I'm sure things are following through. A true case management system would be helpful. I just, I don't want to spend a bunch of money on something that's not going to work. And we are still working with Tyler, tentatively try to get something that will work. But it's just been, it's been difficult. That's been, so I was going to leave it in. But if not, we may have to come back and ask for it if it comes out. If it's needed elsewhere, use it because I'm not right now and I don't, I don't really know what's going to happen. I mean, this has been going on three years now that we've been looking and I don't have a good result. No one seems happy with any system they have and they're always checking for others, so.
And any grant positions in your office that nobody knows if they're going to be funded or not?
Not this year, but next year. I have one attorney position and possibly two victim witness people. They're, they're funded through a vow of violence against women grant that we get as well as the state. I think the, the victim witness advocates I will be safe on, I think. But the attorney position, there's only two in the state and I'm concerned that we may lose that money. Luckily, we have the 30,000 from the state for prosecutors, so it offsets it a little bit. But I'm, I am very concerned about that grant and what's going to happen. And I don't know, I don't know at all. We get some money from the city because they, we provide victim witness services for them. So I, I just don't know what's going to happen. It's a two-year cycle, so we're good through July of next year.
And you're going to see an uptick in wind turbine impact money as well from your office?
I, I don't know. As far as impact assistance, we didn't request.
There's some.
Designated prior to you.
Oh, okay. Well, it was not. No, that's a nice surprise.
I know. I'll tell you what it looks like, but I got so many things open right now. And then Kurt, from going through the, I kind of got a primer from the clerk. Do you have a position that's open right now?
No, so we're.
Air resistant deployed, but.
Correct. So we, we basically, I lost two attorneys last year. I didn't fill one position because I was trying to hold on to people I had and I thought we could cover it. The other position, that individual deployed in November. He will be back next November, so I've taken on his caseload for the time being. But he will, but hopefully we'll return in November.
We'll keep our fingers.
Okay.
And just to let you know, Kurt, that is $55,515.12 as of March 31st.
Really?
That you have.
Okay.
I might have to bring up the original request of what was requested for the impact assistance funds to let you know how you can spend it. But I do recall the former attorney was interns.
Yeah, it was a compliance person or?
No, well, she had that investigator that, what's it was his name, John?
Brooke, Jonathan Root.
So it's probably some name. Personal.
Good.
Thank you very much. IT.
I didn't think I was up for that.
We've been cooking right through these. I thought you knew when you walked in the door. I thought, oh, perfect timing.
I was hoping to watch somebody else's because I don't know what I.
It's my first time too, Ben. Just go with it.
What are we doing?
Did you work?
Do you want, do you want to sit through one more before you start?
Well, I just have what Adam left me with.
So did, did Adam do all the cuts and everything prior to?
Yes.
Right then, leaving?
Yeah.
Why, why don't, why don't we let the next person come up and you can just listen for? I understand where you're coming from.
I appreciate that.
Start me on the question. Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's fine. Brought some, like shaking my shoes up here. Okay. So I was able to cut the six, six grand from my budget as asked. It came out of my contract services. So it's not technically personnel, but it is part of where my money comes to pay my personnel. As you recall, my payroll's kind of funky. I'm under salary. Jennifer, my chief deputy salaried. And then my little, my other field workers basically are then hourly. And so that line is where that comes. I believe I can cut the money proposed there and be safe. The last two, three years, you guys have given us two, 2%, 3% raises across the county. And in those years, I've asked for two or 3% increase in that budget line particularly, so I can give raises appropriately to my staff because they don't get the, it doesn't automatically apply to them. And so I feel fairly confident in that. With the rest of my budget, it's hard. It's, I really have no, no way to predict what the year's going to look like. As far as my caseload goes, I mean, in 2023, we had 30 or 69 total cases. Last year was 73. We're on track to probably get higher than that. As of June 3rd, 2023, we're at 31 cases. June 3rd, 2024, we were at 30 cases and we're at 39 cases already this year. And so I've got, and it varies, how many autopsies I'm going to have. Every case, as long as the person has a viable sample, we'll get toxicology. So that will just continue to kind of grow in proportion. None of my pathologists increase their rates or NMS labs do not increase their rates as far as their testing goes. So I can't anticipate a huge uptick depending on some of, just like I said. Generally, we just do a basic panel. If you're diabetic, there's an additional panel that we have to run. But that's a case by case. It's, it like I said, it's hard and we don't have a normal standard case. Everything's a little bit different. So it's hard to say what each case will, will entail as far as testing goes. So the, I guess, just going to preemptively answer Pete's question. But my, like weird fat, I guess, is the pathology contract. That $5,000, like this year, I'm donating it to a shredder fund. But it's a, it's a line item I kind of inherited. And from what I understand, it was basically rent for the space at the morgue, in the hospital at the morgue. And so I think when you see health took over and started being involved, that kind of just went by the wayside and they haven't asked for it for several years. My predecessor said it'd been a couple of years since they asked for it, but she always kept it in the budget just in case they're ever like, hey, you owe us this five grand. So that's the weird like line item that usually I can, about this time, if we need something, I can have that extra little bit. But that's, that's the only reason I've carried it over for years is just, just in the off chance somebody changes their mind and thinks they need that money. So other than that, like I said, I think for the most part, everything is kind of a guessing, guessing game. The increases I've asked for over the years have been in proportion to what cost increases were, kind of. So I think I had like a one and a half percent increase in my autopsy expense two years ago. And so I asked for one and a half percent just to kind of keep it proportion. But it's hard to say if we're going to have a huge uptick in autopsy cases or not, so.
It's like asking the sheriff how many people are going to spend the night in the jail every year.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. And I don't really have a good source of revenue.
You don't have a lot of problems with your clientele misbehaving.
I guess you could say that, yes.
They don't get mouthy after.
Yes, that. So I mean, that's, like I said, it's kind of a, a guessing game at this point. But I, I feel like the numbers I have are pretty good enough to, if we have a weird, huge uptick, I think we have enough to cover it without having to amend anything. But like that, anything I have left over, I try to turn back over, so.
How do your vehicles look?
My, both my vehicles are actually in good condition at this time. They're both equipped how they needed to be or how they need to be. I do have an older one. I think it's 20, I want to say, ooh, I don't know where I have. But huh?
I know which one it is.
Yeah, the older one. And that one, it's just got older gurneys. It's not equipped with our fancy gurney. But it does the job. It's actually the truck I prefer. The newer truck is like a 2019 and it runs just fine. I haven't had any issues. We have to replace, usually if I go over my auto expense, it's because we're replacing windshield because we're out and about like everybody else. So, but I think my vehicles are in good condition. The only thing that might come up are cameras. We probably need to replace the two cameras I have because I've sent ones I've had that have malfunctioned and they're like, they're too old. We can't do anything for you.
Oh, don't you?
Yeah, so I might have to replace cameras in the next couple of years, which I've gone back and forth with Bailey about, about the best way to kind of get that taken care of. It's not an immediate need, but it will probably come up within the next year or so.
Is there like a certain, so many megapixels that they, that the attorney's office requires or anybody requires for forensic?
No, no, not really. There's not, as far as I know, there's not any specific guidelines. I just need to be able to take effective pictures. Sometimes if our camera malfunctions on scene, we'll use our cell phones. It's not a great option because only two of us have like a work cellphone. But it is an option and those come out okay. Usually we go for like the, I don't know, the midsize, like angle shape. I probably should have brought one in, but it's not a huge fancy tripod involved thing. It's just a basic camera. So nothing too, too big. I think what, three grand was the number I quoted you for two of them? Give or take.
It's just a professional DSLR?
Basically, yeah. Yeah.
Sally, have you ever used the WCCA for the indigent variables at all?
Yes. So I actually have two that qualified this year. I've already turned in all of the affidavit and invoices to Jeremiah at the state. The total cost for the county for those two particular ones was 1,500. We had a third one that does not qualify for that, but we should be seeing some of that. And I think Tracy said she added it to my revenue. Just magic, so.
Super. Thanks for doing that.
Anything else, guys?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, are you ready, Ben?
We're all friends here. It's fine.
We're not, we're not going to be too mean to you.
Okay. So we had cut, we're going to do math now, like 15,000, which I think was what we were targeting?
$12,592.
Yeah.
You're good.
Just basically cut 5,000 from our office equipment, our entire office supplies, and then 5,000 from our contract services.
And I think we kept the additional, so that you guys could hire those. It's still in.
That position advertises this week?
Today. Yeah, posted today.
Ben, I see that, you know, you have proposed $20,000 in contract services. And you may or may not be able to answer this question, so you tell me. I can't answer it. That's fine. But you have a current expenditure of like 45,000 in contract services. How do you cut that more than a half? Am I looking at the right spot?
You are.
Yeah, okay.
Man, just looking at what expenditures have come under there.
So I know Civic Plus comes out of there.
There's a long experience of a TV.
In my day job, that number never goes down. Because everything is moving to the cloud. Everything is, you know, a contract service that you're paying for.
Was that one of the ones where we?
Well, part of it, so Adam, if I understand this right, Adam set up an account for like license renewals that happen.
That's right.
Not annually, but the, every three years or whatever the best purchase price is. Is that, okay, so that's not included in this? Okay.
The IT fund is out of your.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have different items for all our software licensing. I wasn't exactly sure how we did that, but. I wasn't exactly sure how we did that, but.
That are like normal. Like there was a data extract from judicial.
Share the secrets, share the secrets.
You might have moved it to a different fund, but.
Yeah, see, that's what, when he said that, I thought, oh, yeah.
Or they discontinued something that we were paying for. I'm trying to think what that might be though. This year, next year, but.
Um, the biggest one is that Civic.
Because it was a twenty thousand dollar difference in the current ask from previous expenditure.
Yeah, their, their current expenditure is four thousand seven seventy-four. Yeah, and they're asking for twenty grand.
But yeah, that's a door lock.
Then a one time?
If that was the installation, yeah. And I'll keep it paid in twenty thousand.
But we can move on and if, I'll talk to you, Ben.
Yeah, we can help Ben to look at where expenditures are, where things are coming from and where they've been paid out of.
If it was mostly long, that would have been the installation, which would have been a one-time thing.
Anything you see on this budget that, that isn't here that you think you're probably going to need?
Well, I just got our VMware renewal quote yesterday and it's thirty-six thousand. Whereas on here, it's twenty-four.
You got in the, you found the fourth victim?
It is, yes. And then um, I don't know what's happening with Esri because we're not partnering with the city in Weeden Pest anymore.
We talked about it, Ben.
Yeah, oh, you did? Okay.
She's getting it.
So with the Esri, are they just basically saying you can't share licenses and they want every customer on their own agreement?
That's how I understand it.
Okay, this is just, okay.
So the city has to have their own license?
Yep, the city entered it their own contract and we've been working with them to get all of their stuff moved off of ours. I think it's actually.
Well, like, why, why are they saying weed and pest has to be on their own? Because they're kind of part of the county.
So Terry, this is Jennifer. Weeden Pest, Weeden Pest is not a statutorily required board. Under the county, the only ones that fall under the county government part are the library board and fairgrounds. So they're like the rest of the boards that we have, where we have some oversight, but they are not county boards.
What was, what was making me kind of ask the question is because they get a mill or their portion of a mill.
They do because they have a special district, I believe.
Oh, they're looked at as a special district. Okay, that makes total sense. Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
The other, only other one I don't know about is the Bamboo HR. I haven't asked the next about that. If they're going to continue bamboo.
Just for, just probably for a little bit.
Okay, yeah.
And eventually that'll go into the Tyler.
Yeah, yeah.
So that one's too bad.
Yeah.
Okay, now Ben, you're off the hot seat. Thank you.
Oh, and Terry needs access to her county emails.
Yep. I can't get it at my house. We'll talk about that tomorrow.
David, you're up. So far, shit.
So far, so good, yeah.
All right, so I guess first off, um, I just want to lend my support to the assessor and the budget and what, what her needs are. Um, it's not much to, to give out of my budget, but I can give her a couple bucks if I need to.
Okay.
Um.
Every buck counts, you know.
Right, right. Um, also, uh, lend my support to the rental of the, the Esri software. We use that every day in my office. I don't know what we would do without it. Um, it's, that's, it's, that's the platform we host our online maps on, um, do property research. Addressing is done all on that. Um, so appreciate if that, that could stay in there. Um, and then as for my budget, um, so I was required to cut fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-ish, I believe. So I cut that amount. Um, the, the biggest amount, or the biggest line, we got rid of our special projects, planning, um, money, which is basically internship. That's our internship money and um, we didn't hire anybody this year, as, hire an intern this year. And we can put that off. Um, that's not going to hurt us too bad. Um, we lowered building maintenance by a thousand. Um, honestly, most of the maintenance is done by Tony now. He uses his budget, which has been great. So, um, so maybe give it to him, I don't know. Um, and then we lower our cleanup, county cleanup buddy, our budget to five thousand. Um, just to point out, this, this is for our cleanup event we do each year, vouchers for the tires, refrigerators. And that money's basically doubled. What we use in our office, office, um, we get the same amount from the Laramie Rivers Conservation District. So they match us every year. So if we use five thousand, we're really using ten thousand and it's, you know, they, they support that. So like to keep that program around if possible, but um.
The county people love that.
Yeah, the county cleaning, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's our carrot when it comes to cleaning up properties.
And I think it's fantastic.
Yep. Um, and then office supplies, we dropped that one by eleven hundred down to six fifty. Um, honestly, again, like, because planning and zoning will take all of their packets digitally. And, you know, the, the large part of our packets, we send to the clerk digitally, um, other like, like cover page and stuff. Um, we just aren't printing a whole lot as, you know, like we used to. So we don't need all the supplies and we're not sending envelopes and things everywhere. We do send, send a lot of letters, but um, so, so yeah, that, that, we cut that. And I think we'll be good there. Um, and then just kind of some nickel and dime, some stuff. Hundred bucks from, from books and prior articles and maps and uh, three hundred and seventy from travel. Learn twenty from the, I guess, the employee recognition stuff that we had. So, um, so yeah, our, our non-personnel is a whopping twelve thousand four thirty right now. So, which I think we can get by, but um, we have to cut a whole lot more on, so.
So are you answering Pete's first question?
Uh, yeah, there's no fat in my budget, so.
And you did get your enforcement position, is that right?
Yes, um, yes, a, a lady named Jill Hansen. Um, she's, she's been doing an amazing job. She's learning the ropes. Um.
Yep, I met her and she.
Yeah, great person.
Kind of a little firecracker.
Yep.
That's how, that, that's my take on it.
Sure.
How are your vehicles?
Uh, pretty good. Like, we really have, don't have a whole lot of problems with our vehicles. The, the truck that we got was, I think, an old search and rescue truck, but it only had like forty thousand when we got it, miles on it. And I don't think we're maybe eighty thousand now and doing pretty well. Um, I think, while the other vehicles, uh, expedition, we're trading that with uh, the sheriff's office, I believe, at some point. So he's supposed to give us another truck for that.
Okay.
Hopefully in good condition.
Great.
I assume, so.
Do you have any problems?
Not right now, no.
You could have that question asked once.
Anything coming up in the, not just the future, next couple of years, David, that is going to require investment from the county, do you know?
Well, um, you know, that, that depends on if we have money. I mean, our conference is getting old, it needs to be updated. Um, you know, projects wise, um, I mean, we're doing a lot of regulatory writing right now, which that's kind of internal. Um, my office and the attorney's office are really, you know, pounding a lot of that down. So that's kind of where we're putting a lot of work in. Um, our extra time that's not working applications and those types of things. Um, so, so yeah, not, nothing that's imminent or needed like right now. Um, things that we should be aware of. I mean, we do need to update that plan. It's just getting old and, and needs to be updated to, to what, what the people think today and not twenty years ago. So, but.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm just kind of trying to keep your eye on not only this year, but the coming years.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very much. Chelsea says thank you, too. Taylor.
Is not here.
She's not, I think.
Huh? I thought she was on Zoom.
Oh.
There she is.
I need to push something.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, all right, Taylor, have at it.
Perfect. So, um, I'll kind of let you guys know where we're at currently with the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Um, we've been going through a lot of staff changes, uh, making changes to positions. Um, and so, uh, we're going to be able to cut some out of our budget, even though ours doesn't work. Kind of like everybody else's that's been going so far. Um, we're going to be able to cut some out of our, or a lot really out of our indirect costs. Um, I did break down the payroll expenses. Um, I know that that had been talked about for the last couple of years. Um, so we finally did that to, for this year. The other thing that we've taken out of there is the income for the uh, livestock sale that we do not keep, um, that is not the commission. That is the money that goes back to the kids that we write the checks to them. So you'll not see that in the budget anymore. It had traditionally been in there and it really flawed the numbers. Um, it really made County Fair look like we make almost a million dollars and we don't, contrary to the belief. Um, the fair expenses are going to be cut. You'll see a big cut drastically for this year comparative to what it has been. Um, I have cut some out of the awards that we give out. I have cut some out of our entry system costs. We do charge entry fees. The fee itself is just to hold the, the exhibitor's entry on our system. What we pay for still is the actual platform, the ability for people to enter, the ability for us to enter classes. We just have exhibitors pay for their entry on our system, which comes out to fifty cents each. So that's what our entry is. So we are not taking in that cost. This will be the second year of that. Um, in terms of the operation expenses, we have had them reduced. I looked at it year to date. Um, we are down about eleven thousand dollars currently and I don't, and, and I don't think that we'll have any issues staying under where we've currently budgeted. I project that for the future, for this next fiscal year, we'll still sit there too. Um, in terms of income, we have already seen over ten thousand dollars higher than our budgeted for our operational income. That is our camping, overnight stalling, rentals, that kind of thing. We're seeing a lot more dual rentals. So hopefully, um, we continue that trend and that we will see more income. Again, that's something like I can tell you when we're going to have the building rented, but I don't know how many campers will have come through. Um, so that's kind of always a fluctuating number for us. Uh, but I'm hoping that we'll stay, continue to stay above where we budgeted for income because that's always nice. Um, our non-primary income, we have switched some things around. We reclassified some areas. And so it, um, it doesn't look like we have as much in there, but it's more traditional, non-primary. And then the other income that got moved was moved to operational income. Um, just because it goes with the rentals more than non-primary income. Uh, the shooting range currently is sitting about the same as it has the last couple of years. As of today, it is at eighteen thousand and some change. Um, of course, the county treasurer number, we, we know that, or Tracy can give you that number too. And then, like I say, the payout for the livestock sale has been taken out of our budget. So that way you're not seeing that number in there. I just have it typed, but it's not reflected in any of the addition or any of that that's on the budget. So I'm hoping that we can continue to see an increase in our revenue. Um, as we have over the last couple of years, we've trend upward the last several years. Um, I'm also looking at um, some ways to cut out some of our expenses and our costs. Um, and we're trying to figure out ways that we can more economically fix the problems that we do have out here. Um, and we're getting closer on some of those solutions and we're also getting some of those projects taken care of to where I hope we don't have to see them again.
Taylor, I have a question for you. How, how much occupancy do you have on those um, overnight camping spots?
Oh, I could go do the math really quick. Um.
No, just, just ballpark it for me.
Oh.
I, I'm just curious, um, if there's a lot of availability because it seems like wind turbine installation crews like to camp. And the fairgrounds is the closest parking spot.
It is, and Jen can kind of help with this because she was involved in the situation. Um, we see between three to five hundred camping rentals a year. Um, we, the dog show itself over three days uses eighty-four camping sites, I mean camping nights. So, um, eighty-four spaces. So we, I mean, we'll probably see an uptick this year because we also had the um, high school rodeo here last year and they did camping as well. So we see, we're seeing some higher numbers in our campground. We had some people that moved into our campground that stayed there for longer than they should have and claimed domicile. And we ended up having to go through the sheriff's department to evict them. And so with the fair board, um, and Jen, they, the fair board voted to limit them to staying for two weeks in one spot. They could pick up and move, but then we don't have to go through the whole eviction process whenever they won't leave or they stop paying.
Sure.
And we have actually in the last couple of months, um, Bud and I took that back to the board because we did have some long-range folks for the wind turbine projects and then mountain cement projects, um, ask about it and the board stuck with the two weeks. They voted to stay with two weeks.
Taylor, I'm just going to talk about the top part of your Albany County Fair Board expenses, the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six. Sheet says administrative expenses eighty-six thousand. Your year to date right now is thirty-two thousand. Can you explain to me what that difference is?
Yeah, so when I first took this position, our books were all over the place. And we couldn't really get a good number on really anything on the budget. Nobody really understood how people before me got numbers. So that's one of those that I was saying that we can decrease for this year. We'd be able to cut a lot out of that. Same with the employee indirect. Because we have gone through and we've consolidated and we've made sure that things are not being duplicate, duplicated in our system. Um, we're probably going to be sitting, like I just pulled the number and today, as of like this moment, we're sitting at forty-nine thousand. So we'll probably be able to stay within that fifty thousand dollar range on that line item. So there will be a bunch cut out of that. And then same with the employee indirect costs. As of right now, today, this moment, we're sitting at fifty-five thousand. Um, so we'll be able to cut in those two areas on our budget itself.
Okay, well, thank you. I was just, you answered it perfectly.
Yeah, no worries. That's, it was just really hard to get numbers for the last couple of years. And so in order to make sure our numbers are correct, I haven't tried to play with those yet to make sure that we're closer. I just left them kind of where everybody else had had them in prior years. And then now that we're more consistent and that we know where everything's coming from, we'll be able to get more accurate numbers in those two line items.
And then the property tax cut hit the special districts of which you are part of it. Um, do you have an idea of what that property tax cut did to the fair board?
Uh, Tracy gave me a number, um, a couple of month, or a month ago or so, maybe. But, um, and it was a little less than the, what we got this year. But, um, I kind of wait until the commissioners have finalized everything and voted until I stick that total number in the budget and have the board reapprove it. Um, so that way it's actually true and accurate and it's not off of a guestimated number in the beginning. And now we have the more. Um, so that way it's actually true and accurate and it's not off of a guesstimated number in the beginning and now we have the more accurate. That makes sense?
I'll address that more if you.
Okay. Okay, super.
Taylor, I can't see you way down there, but, um, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, have a good rest of the afternoon.
Thank you. And if you guys have questions about the budget narrative that I turned in, um, to answer that's question a little bit more. Not necessarily about the camping, but this is about our average attendance throughout the year for the events we have on the grounds. I did break that out for what we've received for the property tax stuff. And then, um, I also put in our one percent request. It is fifteen thousand higher than what we did last, the last two years. Um, and I believe I requested forty last year, but I requested thirty five for this year. So if you guys have any further questions on that, please feel free to reach out.
I'm good. I already looked over.
Once again, thank you very much, Taylor. Okay, human resources. Come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, comparatively, my budget's rather small compared to some of the departments that have gotten before me. You'll see my largest cut was our employee training. Uh, we had contracted with Biz Library for two years. Uh, we have let that contract expire. We weren't seeing the return on investment that we had hoped with our employees. And then we've been able to work with MORM and LGLP to fill in that gap for employee training. Um, I did keep a little bit in the budget just in case we have some weird trainings come up and paid for Anthony's and Jason's OSHA training. Out of that budget in years past. So I wanted to keep a little bit in that budget. Um, so that was our largest cut. I also cut our office supply budget, um, slightly. But everything else I I maintain is status quo. So that's where we're at. Mine's pretty easy.
Pete, it's like he's ready.
Sure, any needs, uh, coming up in the next couple of years that you see from human resources? Uh, will there be any modules purchased onto the accounting software?
Onto Tyler, uh, at this point, I don't know, uh, until we launch and and kind of figure out where those holes are. Um, we didn't purchase, we have, they have a separate time entry, uh, module that we didn't purchase, but. I believe, and I think Amanda would maybe agree with me, that what we have right now might work. We're still, we're still working with that. So that I could see that maybe is a possible, but as of right now, no.
And you have everything if I did to do the work that you need to do.
I don't think so. Um, I kept our employee recognition program. Um, that budget relatively high. I know I've only spent about half of it, but as we all know, prices are increasing. Um, and I think that's an important, uh, line item to to maintain. Uh, I think recognizing our employees is a big, a big plus that we have here at the county. Coming from a place where they didn't recognize their employees very often. I think that's one great thing with the county that and I'd like to be able to continue that.
Thanks, went up for you guys too, right? Um, and I think sometimes we don't remember that. Um, in the, in the public.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I I was waiting for Pete to ask where the.
I was actually waiting for that question as well. Again, the only thing that I could see maybe cutting would be that employee recognition, recognition. Uh, I do think our, um, drug screening will go down a little bit next year. We'll be able to cut that the following year. Uh, Tyler provides the ability for us to pull the randoms for the sheriff's office and for Roden Bridge ourselves. So that will cut a little bit. And then, of course, if we're not hiring as many physicians, I won't be conducting as many background checks or. Or pre-employment drug screens, but.
Any grant funded positions associated with your office that? I guess what is included in that line item for employee recognition?
So we do, um. The holiday party in December, that's our largest expense out of that. We do Employee Appreciation Day, the first Feb, first Friday in March is National Employee Appreciation Day. We usually buy a small gift for the, all of our employees. This year we did coffee cups. Last year we've done gift certificates. Uh, it also includes our Years of Service Awards. Um, they get a monetary for at the holiday party for that. And then I usually try to do something in the spring. We're gonna bring Lenny's ice cream truck back. Uh, next week or in two weeks to Comfort County and we cover that as well. So just small, small record, you know. Telling our county employees that they're doing a great job and that we appreciate them.
Nothing that wouldn't be anything important if it were commercial or government, uh, other agency kind of thing. Do you keep statistics about turnover, um, from the county?
I do.
Where are we with this regard to turnover year to year, say, five years ago?
Um, I I don't, off the top of my head, I can definitely get you those numbers, Commissioner Moser. Um, and I'm happy to send those kind of our our higher rate and our termination rate. Absolutely. We're up a little bit from when I started. We're up, I would say about ten employees from where I started, but.
Turnover, ten, ten more employees this year than?
No, I'm sorry, ten more employees employed. We're at one sixty eight right now. When I started, I believe we were at one fifty eight. So. That's, I would say that would be probably mostly in the sheriff's office. There are large tires.
Yeah. And there's twenty five grant funded positions. Is that about fish? So, and we only know about one at this point, or do we know any more than that?
At this point, um, we should be getting funding for all those positions except one we do not. I guess kind of like two EMAs department, we still have not heard from yet. Um, I have been told any day for the past month. Um, so we're just still waiting on that. At this point, it looks like for next year, all of our grants are gonna be secure. I know, um. Sheriff has his fire patrol, which is overtime, um, but he's. Thank you, sorry, forest patrol. Talking is not kicking in apparently. Forest patrol is not, uh, he hasn't heard anything, but it is just for overtime. Next year, though, we could see some, something completely different. The way this. The state, the funding that we receive in the state and past through federal funding is usually a year behind. So everything's still okay at this point. What happens with the federal budget this fall could change things.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony's gonna go next, because. I, I think maybe I might have believed him not from there, or maybe he didn't put himself on there, because we don't know.
Well, I thought it was Thursday.
All right.
So, uh, mine's pretty simple. See, I was asked to cut. Seven thousand, six hundred fifty eight. I cut seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty. Three thousand ninety came out of, uh, maintenance supplies, which is custodial stuff. And. Three thousand ninety came out of building maintenance. And sixteen hundred, I just got rid of the power rake and aerate lawns. If less things break one year, that'll just do it out of that.
Hopefully, less things break.
Yeah. Let's see. Yeah, the, uh, the. Building maintenance, um. I'm pretty confident be fine with with what I have right now. If the, uh. People's initiative or whatever passes, I'm a little worried about that. Uh, the next time around, but, uh. But, uh. Yeah, that that's pretty much it.
Any major maintenance that you see at this point coming in any of the buildings or? I know it's hard to predict.
No, um. You know, like, for instance, right now, I, our current expenditures, I think this was up to date on May, I meant like. Eleven thousand, but like our boilers went down last month and, uh. Controller went down, a flow switch went down. Bills thirty five hundred bucks, you know, stuff like that. I, it just happens. So. But, um, we've made a lot of. Savings with custodial supplies and, uh. Doing stuff in-house instead of hiring contractors and. Things like that, so, uh. I'm pretty confident with with this, uh, budget for next year will be good. Lease into maintenance department, so.
And maybe I'm reading this wrong, Anthony, but there's no elevator contract requested this year or?
No, that's all through, uh.
You're asking your question, Pete?
Nope, I'm done. I I know we, we spoke about, um, the sidewalk. Boiling system that was installed and never hooked up.
Yeah, I kind of think we just pushed that aside with all the cuts and stuff going on. Mainly. You still have info on it. I don't remember the numbers, the quotes that we had gotten. But, uh, I think, um. Jake had got a quote, you know, Jake Schneider had got a quote for like three grand to redo that, just resurface it.
Yeah. Is that the kind of thing, though, that is getting pushed off yet again?
Yeah, just for now until we have a better idea how things are going. But I'm, I'm suspicious that it'll only cost three grand to do that. Because when they start breaking the concrete and start hitting those lines, they'll have to fix those lines and stuff like that. So. But, just my opinion.
They installed it, never got used to.
Yeah, we still need a boiler. We still need to hook up electrical pump, uh, all that stuff. I, I think that was like a hundred twenty grand or something.
To your point, when they redid the concrete, they installed the tubing for it. And we didn't have the money at the time to do the boiler and the electrical like Anthony was talking about. And we put that back out to RFP. Last year, maybe, and the price, when we got pricing on it, was almost three times what it would have been. And so we did not pursue putting it in.
Okay.
So we'll see how many times we have to redo the cement. Because we've been putting.
Don't think it's ever gonna actually get connected. Okay. Where the smart money goes. Any other projects, any other concerns on county buildings, um, upkeep, preventative maintenance?
No, um. Last year, we had four Fanco unit motors go out and they were all put in around the same time. So I'm guessing more are probably gonna start going out. But even, even so, I think I'll be good with. With what I have. We save some money and just doing it ourselves instead of, you know. Having long do it or or whatever. And if something crazy happens, I can always fall back to building reserve, right?
What was that eye roll I saw? Nobody has?
I'm, I'm good. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Totally appreciate it. Thanks for jumping in. Okay, Caitlin.
Okay.
You don't want to reschedule for Thursday?
No. I. I'll just speak to Pete. It's, I have extra money in my budget in my salary line item and I have for some time. Probably since I took office and the reason being is we decreased. We've become more efficient, therefore, when people have left. I have not refilled the position because I didn't feel I needed to. I have not spent the money. It's always gone back into cash on hand. But I would like to cover Chelsea's cut that she has to make out of her budget. So the twenty one, I think, thousand that she has to make out of hers can come out of mine. Um, so I will cut, I think it's, I I can't read that.
You cut seventy eight.
Seventy eight thousand out of mine and I think I needed to cut thirty eight. What I would like to do, though, and I would like to keep the extra in my salary line item. I took the fifty thousand out of the contract employees, which I used during elections. Those were the extra staff that we had out in the election building. I'll just pull that money out of my, um, salary line item, so it won't be added in every year. It can just stay in my salary line. And those employees will not happen every year, obviously, because we don't have an election every year, but every two years then. I already have it budgeted. I won't have to rebudget it because elections is tricky. Next year, my election budget's gonna look totally different than what it looks like now. Of course, there's. It's, I think it's very minimal this year, obviously. Um, but I was able to make the cuts out of there as well. But other than that, I think I just decreased. I mean, mostly, most of mine was personnel. Um, I'm a little concerned. We've been, we've been busy and I've had a staff member out with a family issue. Um, and we have people on vacation, so it's been tough. So if you have to stand in the line, I apologize. Um, I just don't see hiring more employees than what I need. Um, so we're, we're kind of working on bare bones, but we're. We're, we're, we're working steady. Um, but, uh, I do have a part-time person. That I hired from, was one of my part-time people out in elections. I hired. Her to do titles. Actually, she was gonna help Stacy and Amanda, um, but she's actually, we've got her trained on doing titles too. So she'll help us through the summer, which is really helpful and she's already budgeted in there. But, um, hopefully she can work quite a bit this summer to help us with, this is when people take vacations, obviously, is in the summertime. So it'll help us through the summer and then she's a student, whether she'll continue on or not, I don't know, but, um. That's kind of where I'm at with my budget and most of the stuff on the bottom there, um, if Amanda scrolls down is all of the contracts. That we have, but those all either come out of the one percent or out of that IT fund. Um, we finished all of the digitizing of our land records this year. That is done. I'm very exciting. So everything is on Arca search now. The only thing that I will look at doing and it probably won't be this year and I don't think it's gonna be very expensive is to convert all of our titles. That are microfilm onto digital. So they're a lot easier. They don't have to come on. You know, they don't have to come here to scan. Obviously, we'll send the microfilms to them. They will digitize them. Um, but I haven't gotten a quote for them yet, so that's. Down the line, but that's probably the last part of that project that I would like to do. And then everything in my office will be digitized, which will be nice. Um, we can send all of our microfilms to archives and they already have it. I don't think they'll want another copy of it, but, um, we have it here too. But other than that, I don't have. Got else out of my budget that. That I've got other than I can cover Chelsea's cut, so she doesn't have to worry about covering her cut that she has to make. Because she's gonna have, I think, enough struggles as it is. I wouldn't want to be in her shoes. I can tell you that much. Elections isn't fun, but I don't know what she's doing is fun either. So, um, maybe we all pick our poison, but. Um, but other than that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
So needs coming up. Sorry. No, no, you're good. Yeah.
I don't see any current needs. I mean, obviously, come election time, I'll have needs, but that's gonna be a next year's budget.
That's up there. Elections is now.
Yeah, elections is up there. And there's not much in that one.
How about long-term storage or any of that stuff now? Digitize everything, just all the records. For those.
We'll keep our books still where they're at. Um, most people don't do research on the books anymore. Uh, there are some that do. Um, but for the most part, we'll just keep them where they're at right now. You know, it is a thought if we needed more office space to look at some kind of long-term storage for the books and we could make that. Where the books are now. I mean, really, it seemingly could be a nice office. So. Um, it's something that we could look at if we were looking for space in my office, but right now we're okay because we don't have. I mean, I think. I I don't know, I think before I got elected, well, I'm trying to think how many, I mean, we've gone from probably nineteen employees down to twelve, and that's with. Bailey and Brady too, so we've just decreased quite a bit, so we don't need as much space, um, so I think we're okay there. I mean, I need a bigger election building, but that's, that's a whole nother. That's a whole nother question there, I, one other conversation, but, you know, early voting has become so popular that it's. That's, we've outgrown our space, I don't think we ever thought when we started it that it would become this popular, um, but people love. To be able to cast their ballot in the machine. Um, and it's become very, very popular, so it is something we're probably gonna have to think about into the future. We could think of renting somewhere, but you'd have to rent it for twenty eight days, which seems, I don't know, you know. And move all the. And move all the equipment and everything, so I just, I don't know, I don't know that there's a.
What are your options for that building? Add on to the building, how much more space?
I mean, you've seen it.
I know.
Um.
The 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 parking is the problem before you even get to the building.
Yeah, well, the parking, obviously, because, you know, people are doing business here, you know, you, I would even think, even if you had a. A second floor, but then you have to think about an elevator where you could store your equipment, because right now, so when we're. During early voting, we lock up all of our equipment upstairs in the election room up here. Um, so the the transporting of the equipment is tough on the equipment, the up and down. I mean, having a location where we can leave our equipment and not ever have to move it. Is really ideal.
Some space.
Yeah, so. Any other questions for me?
Thank you for uh helping Chelsea.
Well, I, you know, um, I've been fortunate where I haven't had to hire any more people, um. And so, I'm, I'm happy to do that, and she needs, she's gonna need the help.
Well, and what you were talking about, pulling off your salary for elections, you've already done that, that already is reflected.
It's already in there, yeah, as long as I can stay where I'm at, I'll be good for now until.
Okay, cuz I know we already discussed it. Amanda.
Amanda, I'm sorry.
And we're ahead of, way ahead of schedule, so.
Lucky someone was texting me to tell me that, it was my turn. Okay, um, well, um, we were able to cut, um, what we were asked to cut, so I don't think there should be any questions there. Um, we actually were able to cut twenty extra dollars, so. Yeah, um, I don't know, are there any questions about anything on there, what would you, is there anything you'd like me to go over? Um. On the budget there, we were able to make cuts to most of the, uh, most of just our individual line items, we were able to just make some reductions to. Um. Things that were not a salary.
So I'm just curious about. Cuz I don't know the answer to this, so, um, in. Extension, do they pay for the, all the the things that the clover buds need for their projects that you do? Once a month?
In terms of, like, who pays, who pays for the clover buds?
Who pays for the the programs?
Yeah, so, um, that money comes from like our four H programming budgets, which is basically. Any money that is from our four H fundraisers or any money that four H has, so that is primarily through. Um, like our big like carnival fundraiser or um donations that people give us or any of our programming things, so.
I just, because. When I was in four H, there was no such thing as clover buds.
Yes.
Now, that does date me a little bit.
Yeah.
But um, I've always been curious about clover buds, because I think they're, that's a really cool.
For our littles.
Yeah, yeah, for the younger brothers and sisters or or whatever, and so I was just curious.
Yeah, if anyone else doesn't know, it's ages five through seven, so it's like for pre-four H um programming, so kind of. You can't be four H proper until you're eight, so it's for our younger members to come and get an introduction to four H, and so. Um, some of our projects, for example, like leather craft, it's kind of more expensive, um, kind of project, so we do sometimes ask for a small. Program fee or project fee from the members to help pay for materials, um, but the expectation is if that's a burden to any family. They're, they don't have to pay for them, so we just say, if you're able to, and if you're willing to pay, sometimes we ask for, you know. Twenty dollars or twenty five dollars depending on what, or less depending on what it is, so sometimes our visual arts, we might say five or ten dollars, depending on the project, just to cover our supplies. Um, for certain projects, but most of the time, it's one of those things, like, if you can afford it, we ask that you do, we may ask for it one time, and then if people. Can't pay that. That's just the end of it. So that's where most of the four H programming money comes from, so, like, the program, we have a program supply. Line item on here on this budget, so that would be divided between like. Um, any program out of the extension office, so that could be ag and natural resource programming, that could be four H programming, um, maybe sensible nutrition, but they kinda have different. Funding through the university through their grants, so that program supplies that comes from the county here could be any, any of those programming. Um, things. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? I think it's pretty simple and straightforward, we're probably the least complicated and one of the smaller budgets that you all work with, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, Tracy, can we flip like my treasures and then I'll do the special funds after, cuz then if that runs on and on and on, then. I don't have to try and remember my budget.
You can do it in whatever order you'd like.
Blame the clerk for setting it up backwards.
Yeah. She signed herself, but.
No, I didn't. I just knew I was gonna be here and I would just go whenever. You set me up for the special funds one night.
So we're, we're just doing your regular.
Yeah, my, my general fund budget first, um, cuz that's easiest. I want to lead though with some good news.
Oh, good.
Um, and maybe it would have been nice if. Small places with Chelsea today, I'm his bear first. Um, Chelsea gave me good news earlier today, she turned in her abstract to the state and the numbers came in better. Than with all the final numbers with all the, the county exemptor. Exempted a lot of people this year, but those wind farms saved our bacon in the corner. That's good to speak, um, so the cuts aren't gonna be near, need to be near as deep. Now, there's still some variables and things that could happen to our budget, Pilt, we have no idea, they never tell us, we don't, you know. I know both, um, Harry and Pete and that is this year's years of hanging out with the county, heard the Pilt stories over and over, so. Um, another good news item is. I think it's about a month ago, I was before you with the Title III and the Forest Reserve Fund said that we're never more. I got an email from Naco, and maybe you guys have seen this email too, because I believe you guys get the Naco emails, but. On May fourteenth, the USA House Agriculture Committee advanced a key win for counties by including language to reauthorize a secure rural schools. Program in this portion of the reconciliation package. That's good first step, but it still has to go before budget and everything else, so maybe we can all. Yeah, keep our fingers and toes cast in lobby for that, so there's my two good news items. Um, I'll move on to my budget, so you'll see, um, I did do several cuts. The biggest cut I did was, I have a part-time employee in a full-time position that I've had. Been given or or I've had, so that that part-time person doesn't get any of the associated benefits, you know, the retirement, health insurance, all those different things or. Um, so that um, cuts there, now I had it cut a little steeper than this. And then I had a staff member tell me they're gonna have a baby. So, where we love babies, um, that means I also probably have to up my part-time person's hours for a period of time. So I did increase that number um, a little bit, uh, to cover that timeframe, because. Um, having three people at my front counter, one of them over just kind of the lunch hour, you know, somebody's on vacation or sick. There's gonna be lines, um, and if. If we go forward into the county refund program, the lines are gonna look like they have for about the last month and a half. They were, been out the door, my staff has worked tires relentlessly and endlessly, um, helping every single person, whether it's to handwrite. Fill it out for them, send them home to get their copies that they need, whatever, they, they are trying to do everything they can to make sure those people are. Approved and have everything that they need. Um, the next little bit of an increase, and and this is one that we discussed when we talked about the budget directive. Is the property tax refund program on the county's program, I did grow it about five percent, that should cover increases in assessed valuations. And the number of recipients, I I suspect we're gonna have more recipients coming through our door if we keep the program, now. That is one of those things, and similar, you know, to their their trial expenses and everything, we don't know who's gonna come through the door on whatever given day and. Um, so that could go up, it could go down. Um, also, um, minor increases in my dues, I just wanna let you guys know, we do have some professional memberships that we. We keep, um, first and foremost, of course, is the Wyoming County Treasurers Association. That gives us our networking capabilities with all the other county treasurers, so we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel if we're having a problem with software or. Implementing a mandate from legislature. We are both members of the Government Finance Officers Association, um, it's one membership fee for both of us. Um, and there we could enjoy educational materials, conferences, if um, there's something that pertains. Um. Guidance on GASP directives, which we're also members of GASP, which is the governmental accounting standards board. A lot of times, GASP comes out with pronouncements that we have to implement, not necessarily the same year that the pronouncement was adopted. But it can be things like. Financial reporting of assets, financial reporting of the um. Like accrued vacations and absences and things like that, that we have to include those in our financial statements, we also now include the. Actuarial basis of the retirement, I'm glad our auditors. Cuz I don't think they offer a college education or a degree in that, because it's terrible. I don't, I don't understand all those actuarial things, um, we're members of the Wyoming Taxpayers Association, um, as. Tax collectors, it's good to have um that network and see. Um. How they advocate for taxpayers and also taxing authorities, um, they don't, don't just, they're not anti-tax, they're. Sensible tax, I guess, is a way to.
Is that the organization that supports the Cowboy Family Program?
Exactly, that's exactly that program, or that. Group, um, we also are a member of Pacer, which we look up, Pacer is, um, I don't know what that acronym stands for, to be quite honest. It's where we look up our bankruptcy, so we get a lot of bankruptcy notifications, and we have to verify if they don't property taxes, file claims. Against uh, that, um, so we wanna keep up to date on that. Also a member of NACFO, which is the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers and Finance Officers. That's a nationwide network, it's like the Naco of the treasures. And the big increase comes from two sources, one, we subscribe to RIS, the Revenue Information. System with the state of Wyoming, we have three. Actually, maybe four, um, users in my office that can access that, and what we do is sometimes. The clerk's office needs to wait on the title, we can go and look, and that gives us access to other counties' information, so if it's titled or registered in. Natrona County, we can go look up that weight on there. Um. They raised their access fees per user to. I guess I'm not sure the actual individual user, but the user cost us about twenty five dollars a month is now about a hundred and ten. Uh, the other thing, we subscribe to the Laramie Boomerang, uh, for, we watch, you know. Obituaries, we watch, I watch, um, other foreclosures.
All the legal notices.
Yeah, everything, some of them I don't wanna watch, but we do, um, but that subscription went from, I wanna say it was three hundred dollars up to four hundred and fifty. Almost four, four hundred and fifty, so those are my big increases. Now, on the revenue side. Um. Many of the. Totals on the totals worksheet for the revenues, many have them have decreased, I've actually increased mine. Um, looking at the historical standards and using just some of the WCCA numbers that they provide in the revenue estimating manual. One of the things that's included in my budget are the transfers in from other funds. So that would include if we use direct aid or one percent. I know when the budget team here met, we vehemently, based on historic. Decisions of the Board of Commissioners, um, go ahead and plugged in some of those numbers that we've transferred from direct aid. Into the general fund, that would include the auditor contract, fuel. Some utilities, insurances such as like the liability insurance and the property insurance, um. Postage, some of those non-personnel items that we've been able to help ourselves with. So those are calculated in the revenues. Next, on the revenue side, I wanna talk about, because every revenue dollar that. The county collects passes through the county treasurer's hands, um, each department is required by the twenty fifth of the month following the month. Remit their revenues to my office, so then we, we send out the report, or Sunny sends out the report, I do not, she does a great job. Um, and this shows us being at the end of April, um, just under seventy five percent, like seventy three point eight seven. Many of our revenues aren't cyclical, you know, monthly same amount every month, not even the same amount quarterly. Um, for instance, our second largest revenue is Pilt, and that comes whenever they wanna send it to us in June. So, hopefully it should be coming soon, but I feel like, based on the history, I mean, we're kinda right on track. To um, collect where we should. So with that, I would hopefully entertain any questions. On that, and I can move on to the special funds, but I'm gonna do that from over there, so I can go, this is this and that is that with a pointer.
I wanted to tell everybody, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the hard work that you do to, to put this all together for us. This afternoon and and tomorrow, in some counties. They are taking every office down to five hundred dollars. And then they have to justify everything up from five hundred dollars. And I am so glad that we have a group that works so well together that we don't even. Have to think about doing that, so thank you so much, that's, that would be a terrible, terrible. Way to spend these next few days, and so, I really appreciate everybody working on it. Okay.
Special funds. Can you make me co-host?
I can, but.
Tracy, before you get there too far.
There's no pattern in my diet. My budget, there's no pattern in my budget, probably in my diet.
Does WCCH share the revenue projections with you flowing out forward in twenty six, twenty seven?
Um, no, they are in, um, just in four twenty six, they're not four twenty seven, twenty eight, yeah.
Okay, did you see that maybe Pilt was being talked about as a third unless, um, going forward and direct aid being cut?
Um, I have not heard those um, talks, but um, it wouldn't surprise me, they've been, I've been here for the county. Uh, twenty two years, and that's always been, um, the conversation. So I know in the past, they've attached it to bills that they really wanna go through, like Medicare bill. And those things, and that way the Pilt can go, being the pit or the other way around, you want Pilt to go through, so they attach unpopular. You want Pil to go through, so they attach unpopular things and push it through Congress. I, I am a proponent of other governmental agencies that own property within our county borders paying as well. But I'm pretty sure that's not gonna happen in my lifetime.
So there's some pretty interesting numbers, and they're all conjecture. But they all have a real interesting part with us. Thank goodness for wind, cuz what was the wind offset? What we're doing, could you give us like a ballpark? Six point two?
A lot, millions.
Is it six point two?
Well, the numbers have changed slightly since those funds. Just because they got, they got a little better, but because she got the state assessed and, and as well. Yeah, everything but real cars.
Yeah, it was about six million in property taxes that they're paying.
So if we didn't have wind farms, we'd be having a different conversation.
So, so the original impact was in the nine million dollar mark, wasn't it?
Yeah, so county-wise, I ran just what the straight impact was for all of these exemptions, and we're at one million, five hundred eighty-two dollars, four hundred, four hundred eighty-five. But really, refiguring my new numbers, we're at like two forty-five, two hundred forty-five thousand. So that difference.
Just because of that turbine offset?
Wind farms, state assessed, that did go up. Um, minerals went up. And then other increases, there was increases in like commercial properties and you know, new development and construction, but wind farms is the biggest chunk of that.
And that's money that we would have otherwise been able to put towards the community that we're now having to offset just to operate under.
And to go back to your original question to Taylor, um, I, I am working on getting new numbers for both the library and the fairgrounds. Um, Chelsea called me eleven-thirty?
Eleven-thirty.
Last night?
Last night I probably would've gotten it done. No, but yeah, this morning, and so I got a county number done so that the, the total circuit does include the county number, new county number for that. But, um, not for others yet. But I suspect by the end of day tomorrow.
Because that, that's a percentage, or that's a formula, that's not necessarily a number, a dollar amount.
Yeah, so I think this is a good time, probably, since this is considered a special other fund, and we got plenty of time cuz I'm the last one. This is probably a good time to discuss how our level funding program works. What, that's what we've been calling it since two thousand and nine. So what happens is, the fairgrounds and the library, they get the same amount every single month. So instead of them enduring the peaks and valleys of tax collection, because like October, um, they might only, like the fairgrounds in the, in the past might have only got four thousand that month. But then December, for the November collections, they would've got a hundred thousand. Well, then it's on them to cash flow that. Well, the county's taken care of that for them now. So what we've done in the past, um, with this program, what we started doing, I should say, is we say, alright, you're gonna, based on history, you're gonna get the total of, um, and then use the library, like one million dollars. We divvy that up over the twelve months, county carries all the shorts and, and everything like that. We still divvy it up when we do the monthly distributions of the mill levies. We still divvy it up based on the historic mill levy that was of that day back in two thousand and nine. So the county, we get nine point nine oh one. The library is one point six three six. I have these numbers in order to compare, but, and, uh, uh, the fairgrounds was, um, point four six seven, I think. It should add up to twelve mil. If it doesn't, I've got a number wrong.
Want me to do it real quick?
No, because I don't want you to tell me I'm wrong. Who's the accountant now?
I couldn't find one with tape. Are you kidding? I was, I, I really wanted to.
Do you wanna borrow one? I haven't, no. Over the, those, the number of years since two thousand and nine, the counties had some good years where we've got a little bit more over and above. Um, and there's years that, that it's gone below. So we probably have a little extra cash in there. But that also covers us, so we're not going in the hole. Because we have so many things, um, that we have to maintain some of those reserve monies within our general account, otherwise we're gonna um, have cash flow issues of our own. So for instance, like WIC is a reimbursement grant, we have to front their entire budget until the state reimburses this, which sometimes is very, very slow. So, I'm hesitant to give them the, any of the cash that I show that's in their fund because it helps us with those times. Now could be a time where you guys would like, if you would like to decide, you know, at, um, June thirtieth, we shore up and we zero that out and we, we, we're, you know, do it for a year or keep doing it the same way. Um, historically, what I've done was if assessed valuations grow three percent, I grow their payments three percent. Keep it just even. Um, with the shortfall that we were looking at in the property tax, I grew everything else, delinquents, interest, motor vehicle, um, and I think veterans exemption, I grew all of that by what we had been, three percent, and then deducted went with the actual number of property tax, so it would decrease. We can change how we do that. We can do a stew, you know, an increase. There's, there's options, and I can prepare different options for you guys to review too. Thoughts or questions on that?
So when you tell you, are you wanting to take whatever's left of the straggle money that may not have been allocated and putting it into a contingency fund or redistributing to the appropriate entities based on a percentage?
So what is left over at the end of the day, at the end of the fiscal year? We're just keeping in that same fund for each of those, fairgrounds and the, the library right now. So we could divvy all of it out, take it to zero. We could say, no, we're keeping, cuz they don't get quite the same. So say the fairgrounds gets to keep twenty-five thousand in there as a base to carry all the highs and lows and the fifty thousand for the library. Um, we can leave it the way it is um, to help them, you know, through some of these downturns. But I suspect once I put some of these numbers in, that they're probably gonna be doing, um, rough out where they are this year, if not maybe a little more with the other ones growing a little faster.
It wouldn't put the county in unfavorable financial position?
No. No, I would, um, always put the county first.
Can figure.
Because, um, we're bigger. Serious, serious talks, you know, you have to have a little humor in there. No, but the county should always come first. We do carry a large weight of the liability on various things for them as well.
Well, and I just know how many contingencies and reserve accounts we are, are on the books now.
Yes, we have several. Alright, I'm going to share the worksheet.
Said the P drive. Yeah, Tracy.
It'll probably give you a read-only.
Okay.
Oh, I gotta hit this other sheet. And it's super small, make it.
It's pretty little.
That's how our budget feels this year, right? Determined by screen size.
I know, I can. Tomorrow I'll bring my binoculars.
Okay, is that? Do we, I just make it bigger and scroll back and forth when you talk about more?
I've got it up, so I think we just need to worry about, I, I'm assuming Pete, I've got it up, yeah, so.
Right there, if that works. I think I can without my glasses.
No, I can't. If I put my glasses on, I couldn't see it at all.
Alright, this is a big comple- make complicated worksheet, and it's linked to several other worksheets. So, and just so you know, I think it's the mouse. I don't think it's a bad any trouble. The first part of the worksheet here is the county general fund. So you can see that Amanda and Kayla have the expenditures uh, link. So this is linked, you can see at the top there to the commissioner's worksheet. So if that worksheet changes, this automatically changes. Excuse me, um, and then she's got the, the fiscal year twenty-five budget. And compared to that with this number here is, um, increases or decreases. So in this case, it's a decrease, a positive is a increase. And then the percentage of that. Um, on the writer portion of the general fund is the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budgeted revenue in column F. And then it's on G is this year's projected revenue as based on what the departments have placed into, um, each of their revenue lines. And then you can see there's the increases or decreases. You're in the P drive.
Yeah, I'm using the stuff I already had saved on.
Cause if she made any changes.
Yeah, the numbers are, they're, they're close.
It did change my revenue and the coroner revenue today.
I did, okay, cuz I downloaded this last week or the week before.
Yeah, and I am still I'm tuning the cash on hand balances. That's why you did not get an email from me saying, hey, I got them done.
Figured I'd be seeing you sooner or later, so yeah.
There's some difficulties. So as you can see, the expenditures are eighteen million, five hundred fifty-four thousand. And then the revenues are, um, sixteen million, seven hundred and seven. That leaves a budget shortfall of one point eight million. Now, we'll, we will have cash on hand at the end of the fiscal year. I just don't know how much quite yet. I think last fiscal year, we ended up with an additional nine hundred thousand that we were able to reallocate to different things when we amended the budget for the property tax refund program. I think we also, um, submitted some more for abandoned vehicle and perhaps fire? Does that sound right, Kayla? Fire?
Yeah, I think so.
So, and that was over and above. Just gonna take a walk on through here. Um, I took out any of the transfers because we don't know what those final numbers are yet, of course. Arrow here. So I'll move over to one percent optional. I'll kinda cover like what these have been used for in the past. I mean, obviously, you know what one percent's gonna be used for, but, um, some of those things, so everybody is on the same page. So one percent, I have, I'm estimating right now that we should have about five hundred thousand on cash on hand. There we go. Um, about a million coming in, and I'm going to look at where we are for this fiscal year, but I think we can raise this up just a little bit as well. Um, our receipts have been a little higher in the last couple of years. I don't wanna go too high either because some of us due to the wind farm activity. And you just don't wanna count on more revenue and then come in short, obviously. This number is the county departments for all the requests, which include probably continuing education and some of those other things like that, um, that they, some of us have discussed in their budgets. So the community partner requests, and Bailey's gonna probably bring this up, um, are five hundred and sixty thousand. So you guys will need to discuss that as well. Oops. Tracy, are there any restrictions on one percent on what it can be spent for? There is none. It's a general optional use, uh, sales tax. So you can pretty much use it for anything, including personnel. Now, Direct Aid hardship, that's, um, granted to us through legislature. Um, and it's based on a population formula. Don't ask me about that formula either, that's. I don't calculate them, thank goodness, but according to the WCCA Revenue Estimating Manual, we should give this two point three million. Um, this is the amount that we have calculated into the general fund budget, the nine hundred forty-four thousand to help offset some of those non-personnel costs. Um, transfer into the IT fund or, um, and basically just trying to keep that a zero balance fund. If there's cash on hand at the end of the year, then we would deduct this transfer by that cash amount. Same with the grant match. Pilot Hill, I think that's one we have committed to for the Trailhead Project. And you can see the ERP system, uh, the major portion of the project costs are, are, we paid them. So we shouldn't, um, have any left of those. We'll have annual licensing and the SaaS agreement things, um, going forward, but that'll be in the IT one. Uh, county road fund.
We should have EMS contract in there, or no, maybe switch it out.
Um, I think this one got added in this spot because we caught it right before we approved the budget, so, but we'll double check that. The county road fund has between the the cash in the county road fund and the investments in the equipment reserve, it has about four point nine million in there. We're estimated to get a five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars to um, coal tax, fuel tax, severance tax, we, um, that, all the counties get a portion of that. Severance tax. We never know what kind of road projects come up that might qualify for this. They do need to be, I wish Robin's not here, see. Um, they have to be, you know, for the county roads, obviously, projects over seventy-five thousand for the road fund have to go out to bid. Our county policy is more stringent than that. It has to be fifty thousand, I believe. Um, and then road expenditures, and then every year we put away to that equipment reserve. Another small one. Um, I don't know how to make this bigger without a mouse. It's not working very good.
Just go, go ahead.
I can read a verbative. Oh, no, it wants to work up there. Nope. Okay, do you need batteries?
No, he just changed the battery.
Tracy, it needs its butt.
I controlled plus.
Okay, the employee health benefit account, that is our self-infunded insurance account. So the premiums that the commissioners pay and any premiums that employees pay through payroll deduction go into this fund to help offset the claims, administrative fee that we paid a sign to administer and use their, uh, network. We have other, um, things in there, well, Massa, I think we can, I don't think these numbers are accurate, Amanda, cuz we canceled Massa.
Oh, I thought you took that out already.
Massa's in here. On the health insurance. Anyway. We're also looking, we should be getting our information on renewal and or bids to see what the, their, this cost could go up. Which trickles down to the general fund, of course. It's kind of self-explanatory what that fund is for. And then columns E through G, that's just all of our grants. We budget them at fourteen million. Because every time we get a new grant, we'd have to go out to advertise, have a budget hearing and all those things. So this kind of covers us through the year, so we don't have to do that every single time. Uh, grant match, that is Bailey's fund where she matches, um, all the different grants. And there you can see, we also take the, we get a few revenues in there, um, from like the attorney reimbursement. You had a, you know, crime victim witness people or whatever, I don't. I don't know who you have in that position.
EMA is actually twenty-five thousand dollar ship.
Okay. EMA is twenty-five thousand. Let me write a note, Bailey, because my thing faster than me trying to get the cursor over there.
Then I'll go over everything tomorrow, too.
Okay, um, vehicle replacement that has, um. Back in the. Many moons ago, we used to have to get slip grants every, almost every year to get new vehicles because the county was, we couldn't afford them. So eventually the slip work said, Albany County, you need to come up with a plan. We started setting aside money and this is what's left in there. Um, we'll probably want to use this money, but transfer into it or, um. Assess our vehicles if that's the route you guys choose to go. Okay, uh, abandoned vehicle fund, that is where we're statutorily required to keep. Um, about one dollar for every citizen for the census in that fund, uh, to fund. Vehicles that are towed, that are abandoned. There is. We're gonna, as accounting, need to look at how we're doing this, uh, because it is costing more because of storage. Um, on the vehicles. I don't know if Erin or Sheriff Applehans has come up with a plan on that or, or, or not, but.
There's an alternate discussion.
That's good, because we're selling the abandoned vehicles for thirty dollars and paying out seven hundred and twenty. Have them. Or towed and stored. The commissary fund is one that's housed over by the, the jail. And it is where the inmates, when they come in, they take their money. And then they have a, an account where to pay for whatever sundries or whatever they have, uh, over there. And it's kind of just its own business enterprise. The contingency fund, that is, uh, the fund that was created as one of our reserves. Uh, we've funded it before from direct aid, we've used general fund, and so it's kind of a combination of different. Uh, monies within there, but that is the money that's accessible to the county to use. Now, of that four point six million that's in there. Only one point four million of it is on hand, the rest is in, of the investments in, um, like CDs or mortgage-backed, um, bonds. The jail overage and the jail endowment, those are. The jail endowment is the million sixty-seven thousand. That has to stay, um, in that principal. And it can, the money of interest earned off of that can be used to pay the county back for maintenance items that happened at the jail. Um, and the jail overage was based in nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen eighty-nine specific purpose tax. As when that one was formed, and that can be used for those same maintenance things that was originally on the ballot, kind of just like our specific purpose taxes. Mr. Balance. Um, the drug asset forfeiture is an account that it was originally started a number of years ago. Because the county was able to seize an airplane used in drug trafficking. And then when they sell that, we get a portion of it. And then it can only be used for specific purposes. And then it gets reported annually through the equitable sharing program, which the sheriff office does. Um, I do believe they have one in the works that. See in here, no, that we're expecting some money coming in on. I don't remember that amount, I want to say it was like six thousand, but I could be wrong on that number. The fire reimbursement, um, this is just. Us. Knowing that there, we're gonna have fires, um, it's not necessarily fires within our county. Uh, it can be fires. That, um, or neighboring counties, other states. Our firefighters travel across the country, including Chad, to fight fires. And then, for instance, if it's a federal fire, the federal government's gonna pay us back. Um, Chad has also done very well, he charges an administrative fee that goes into the general fund. Um, and this last year, I want to say he's helped offset his own department costs. By eighty thousand, if not more.
He charges not the county the fee, he charges outside agencies the fee to process.
Correct.
Just so everybody, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, he, um, he bills for everybody, um, every firefighter within the county. Um, which includes the fire district, the city of Laramie, uh, town of Rock River, and all the different fire zones and volunteer fire departments. So all that billing goes centrally through him. So also if we have road and bridge or sheriff, uh, personnel that go out on a fire within our county. Um, he would also bill for them to get those funds back. And our equipment that may travel to those fires as well.
He's, he's helped us out a lot.
Yes.
In, in everything that he's been doing.
Yes, he does an excellent job and. I don't know how he does it, because he goes out on those fires, so he personally can make his money too.
Yeah.
They have the minimum rates that certain classifications of firefighters can make. Economic development that, the, the first one is the beach street property. So coming into that, there's, um, the rent from disruptive med tech. Um, expenditures, of course, are utilities and other things. Uh, and we can use things like Pilot Hill, the money for Pilot Hill or the airport. Things that are related to stimulating economic growth within North County borders. Um, Pete Lee's kind of the same way, just a little different project. Bailey can tell you.
There's a little more restrictions with, um, Pete Lee. The beach street property was one of the first, um, ERC grants. But they did, um, so they've put just a few more restrictions on the Pete Lee money, so we decided to keep it up early. Also, um. Tracy, I think in there we're missing the payback to Wyoming Business Council and Pete Lee. Uh, we do have to pay them back a, a percentage of what we're collecting from Pete Lane. So that's, I think that's like twenty-three thousand dollars from the past fiscal years. And then, of course, I haven't done, um, my wife, I, I, because you're so struck.
The county building contingency, um, that is, you know, the, where we've been paying for a lot of those deferred maintenance items like roofs. And things like that. Um, I believe the solar arrays and the signs are gonna be in this, um, in there. Uh, once I do, or with that transfer from last year, it has about one point eight million in there. Um, I don't know if there's any outstanding expenditures against that yet. But that's what I had shown when I was cleaning some of these cash on hands. The salary reserve has two and a half million, those are the, uh, it's kind of. A stabilization account that we created. I don't know, about. Five or six, maybe even seven years ago now.
Probably after the layoffs is when we started to do that, I think.
I think that's a little further than.
You think it was?
More recent since the layoffs.
Well, yeah, yeah, like it was after, after the layoffs.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, maybe nineteen, I don't know when it was, do you remember when we started both?
It doesn't necessarily matter when we started, if we've been trying to put aside in there to help, um, keep employees, so we wouldn't have layoffs ever again. Because, um. Some of us who are here through that knew how terrible they were.
Two, oh, yes, it was awful, awful, awful.
Very devastating to some departments, um. And it was, um, our time to be here. Um, Brett's American Rescue Plan and ARPA revenue loss and. Local assistance for tribal. See, uh.
Oh, geez. I don't remember right now.
Nobody knows all the acronyms. We just have to live with acronyms, because that's.
Yeah, it's community fund, isn't it?
Thank you, yes, local agency, community, tribal and community fund.
That's it. The teamwork.
Yeah, I've already asked that question, dude, I couldn't remember.
It, it, kind of, um, it's just another stem of ARPA is really what.
So that's those, um. Sure. Here's the IT technology fund that we kind of discussed, so he, there's the six hundred and twenty-nine thousand coming in. And the worksheet has six hundred and twenty-nine thousand of expenditures, so it's just zeros out. Um, the impact assistance, this is, um. As of, this is not as of this year, I do need to update these cash numbers here. But, um, in our new software, it'll be much easier because right now we have, in our old software. We have an all-in-one fund. So I have to manually divvy up, let's look at the expenditures and, and put it in the right bucket. In our new fund, or our new software, each one of the projects is its own fund, so it'll be much easier going forward to track those expenses.
Well, and we'll have to add another column for.
Drill tie, yeah. Um, and the, the most current report I sent you was dated March, well, I think I sent it out in April, but it's from through March thirty-first. And I think there is like four point nine million in the fund, maybe four point six. But, um, that did have real tie on there as well. But a lot of these are, have specific uses. Um, any new projects going forward, we would have to report those to legislature. We still report these through WCCA. I know in the past, um, we have, um. With. Boswell Springs, um, had a little. Trouble. Um, and where, it, it was really hard though, because impact assistance, you know, if you have two projects permitting at the same time. You ask for the same things in both, you don't know if they're, either one's gonna go through. So they got a little upset saying we were, um, double dipping or asking for the same thing over and over. But it, like I said, it's hard to know if the project's even gonna go through. But we do have some unallocated funds in there, one, um, in Boswell Springs and then the other in Choke Cherry. When Choke Cherry was in, um, going through its permitting process, we didn't have that whole. You know, hearing and everything through the industrial siding commission. I think they just said, here's what you get. Um, and that's, we've been getting that. So it's, um. Those, since they're unallocated, I, you know, if we. Wanted to, as a county, use those to help ourselves now, or maybe use half this year and see you at half next year. That's at your discretion, of course, to make these decisions, but there's those. Uh, thoughts. Uh, the new facility reserve, it has money in it, I just don't have that cash balance handy. But that's money we started setting aside for a new county facility.
Okay.
She's gonna hurt her wrist trying to get the mouse to work.
Yeah, we don't want her wrist damaged again.
Well, I'd have to change the dongle. Amanda could share it for you too, if you need her to.
Tell me.
I'm, I'm working on a new batter or a new mouse for the. For the desk.
We'll, we'll see if there's spending available.
I would have brought my backpack, I have one that, the old school, you know, plugs in with the whole cord. I didn't bring my backpack.
I know, I think IT would have someone on hand.
This is fair. Um, this is all the specific purpose tax, um, so when we have a specific purpose tax. There's usually residual money over and above that we collect above the ballot, because they can't just say that tax is collected, we shut the tax off today. There's a whole notification process that has to go out to your, your Walmarts, your home bases, your, um. Blue door and lumber, all of those, um, so they can adjust their computer system, and so we get extra. But they still have to be used for those original ballot purposes. And you can see, um, these balances do need updated, but, um, there's still monies. Um, left in all of them, of course, there's, we're still collecting the twenty-eighteen specific purpose tax. We are getting closer and closer to having that collected, and what we need to, um, probably sit down on, as a county and come together on what we want our projects to be. Um, because then we need to take the steps to talk with the city of Laramie and Rock River. Um, and everybody come together on. A ballot initiative. Because we're looking, last time I sent out the reports, I think it was May. And we don't want it to lapse, because it's kind of a, no, it's kind of a double-edged sword. And the last time we had a lapse between, um, twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen. People were like, ooh, it's only five percent, I'm gonna go buy a car. Sure, okay. So they did, so we had the increase, you know, in sales tax collections and also the motor vehicle evaluations, where we charged the, the fees on there. But, um. It's still kind of a headache.
Yeah. It's hard for the businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a pain in the butt.
Well, we're gonna have to look at two, we've been talking about budget. If we're gonna have to have a special election, we're gonna have to budget for it, because it will be in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
You want your money back, don't you?
No, I know. Because it's gonna be in the midst of like coding our other, I mean.
Of the other election.
Yeah, I mean, but it, I mean, honestly, we're gonna have to, I mean, if we're really thinking about that, I'm gonna have to look at what the cost of a special election is gonna be, and I'm gonna have to budget for it. Yeah, so I'll do that. Let's say twenty-ten was in me. And of course, it, there'd be a lot of inflationary costs. So that was a really fast overview of all of our special, special funds. Happy to answer all the questions.
You got lucky, they went through with me last week. Or the week before.
Still my thunder.
You were out of tune. Tracy, let's just, to clean up some of these accounts, so that you don't have to carry over twenty-oh-one's overpayments. Just putting those into the appropriate budgets and then removing general fund monies out of that, so that we never have to see twenty-oh-one again. We go work with just general fund.
So. Rachel, I know you're always my poster child for the two thousand.
Hey, I wasn't, I wasn't there, so yeah, I'm happy to be your host show.
So the library roof replacement was part of the specific purpose tax, um, and the upfront money designation means it was bonded. So we got the money on hand and it was bonded. A lot of times now in bonding, they put a stipulation in there that the bond fund proceeds have to be used within the three-year period. Otherwise, you have to send it back to the bonding, you know, whoever bought the bonds. And so in this case, um, the library got a new roof, and so. Um so in this case, um the library got a new roof and so now they have six thousand dollars left. Um while this was as of then, guys have used a little bit.
Yeah, we may, we may, we did some good progress. I think it was a I think we used like fifteen thousand of it in the last year or so.
So we've gotten it down, but um it's easily um, you know, the next time Sheriff Appahans buys a vehicle, we can take a hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents out of there and, you know, cover the dock fee of one vehicle. But um, yeah, I would love to get these all off the books. I would have loved to before we got new software because I didn't listen to them.
So is it just a function of too many accounts and forgetting that there's one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents, two thousand and one spent tax?
Or are they earmarked so hard that you can?
Sometimes that's it.
Yeah, and and that's why I use, you know, the library as my example always is because there's not always a a roof project that comes along that can be, that can be used for. Um and then sometimes, yeah, I mean collectively, we have hundred ninety-one, ten plus fifty-six, sixty-two in patrol vehicles. That's definitely just a dock fee on a on a purchase agreement. Um search and rescue vest, we could probably next time use that as a match towards the vests. If we order more ballistic vests.
I think these are the ones you can be seen in, not the bulletproof kind of.
Oh, like uh the, no, the rest of ones? So it was search and rescue slash vests. It's ballistic vests, yeah. It really is. It's not that orange highway pickup.
About earmarking a little too hard.
Yeah. Um I know, like with road and bridge, I know Rob um he takes different things from different pots because like twenty-ten is easier to use than eighteen and then that's all easier to use than county road funds.
Yeah, he's he's, he keeps track of this.
Yeah, he watches it. Port House Renovation, we almost have made it through that. That balance is a little high on here. Like I said, these need to be updated upon this one, but um.
Can you use like the elevator contract out of that?
Not a, not a contractual service. It had to have to be um more like a repair or maintenance of the original fix. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so when we redid this room, did we come out of that?
Yes, part of it. Part of it was already in the twenty-eighteen as well because we put that on the ballot.
Can it repair the uh heated sidewalk?
No, because that was a north entry project. And not part of, the north entry wasn't conceptualized in two thousand and one.
Good try, though. I keep trying to come up with things we can.
Anytime like Anthony has brought projects for, and I know Kayla and I both worked with them to like, hey, let's use this first, if we can. Um awkward for protection, I don't know, because that one was really tied into Telephone Canyon and I eighty. And then, yeah, it was very specific.
I mean, we, we could try and partner with the city. I know they're doing a well, um monitoring well. I am right now. If any of those wells have anything to do with monitoring what's coming off that canyon, we could partner that way and use some of that money. How much is left in it?
Um right now, this says a hundred and thirty-six, but it does need updating. I don't know if there was anything since, since updated at last.
Yeah, the last, I think, um last time we used that fund was for that. After.
Nope, so that's probably gone down a little bit from this, maybe.
Are the definitions on the P drive for what spent money can and cannot be spent or on?
Um they're on the ballots. I can put the copies of the ballots out there. Um I don't know that they're on the P drive. They may be. I can send them to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be Oak Springs.
I'll say.
Yes, it does. And you should leave. Just because every time I look at there, it gives me a good laugh.
Give you a giggle? Okay, fine.
We all know what it really is.
So with all of these funds, uh what would you say are cash or contingency in a month? Is it six months of contingency now?
Um with all the reserves that we have, um we have about six months of expenditures um between all the different grants. So if we had no money coming in, we could survive for six months. And then after that, then we better find money. I mean, we should find money in the meantime anyway, but.
And so the wind s- sales, little things that offset the property cuts, but those will be finished at some point. Don't quit buying, you know.
So the thing about wind farms is it's all based a lot on um equipment and equipment depreciates and I don't know how that formula works either. That's a Chelsea question, obviously, but. Um so the wind farmers might be here today with the value and they're gonna go down, so then the property tax goes down with it.
Right, right, yes. And if that budget amendment gets passed through the, through the electorate. Uh, oh, yeah, that will be permanent. As our property tit- our taxes from wind will level off and go down at some point. Yeah, so we're saved by wind this year, but we're not gonna be saved by wind every year, is my point.
No. Um, yeah, the wind has done some good things. I mean, in that respect, we get the impact assistance, which helps us mitigate those influx of workers and you know, road construction that happens out there and then the property tax, of course, but um another um thing we need to look towards is the, and I I I think I say this every time we talk about budget. Hey, we got rare earths.
Good luck finding it.
They um, oh, they know where it is.
I know, but it doesn't look like it if you drive up there.
No, because they haven't started their permitting process, to my knowledge, but um there's good and bad to the rare earths though because it is environmentally.
A dirty process.
Yeah. So. Budget's fun, huh?
Yeah.
Any other?
No, I just personally, a comment for me is I feel like uh people tell me that government should run like a business and then de-invest themselves from the business every year if they can with property taxes. I think myself, what kind of business do you want us to run? Uh do you want a business that has people and the tools to be successful, or do you want to have less people, less tools and tell them to be more successful? I really, it's really difficult for me to sit here and think, well, we wouldn't offset something that you need, Chelsea, because that's what you need to get the job done. Um having that discussion um uh the general public is needs to be more frank about it. Uh I have never invested in a stock where they cut funding to that company every year. Because why would you? It's going away. Uh but we feel like that's all right to do um in government, at least recently. Um and so um my take on it is eggs go up for you guys, so why would we flatten your salaries this year? Why, but what point does that make, right? Like you just took a pay cut if we don't do something to offset the cost of living for you. Uh I would like the taxpayers who voted for that to tell me how to do that. Um because it's not magic. Um and so we do have contingency funds. But I remember rolling in here eight years ago, there was no salary reserve account funding. So this whole set of group of people that are fantastic, do their work good, or based on the vagaries of sales tax going up. You gotta raise if sales tax went up, if I remember correctly. Um that's no way to run a business. Um and I would love somebody in the business community who supports cutting property taxes. Tell me how that's running a business. Um so that's my rant for the day. Uh you know where I'm coming from because I just don't think you all should have to do more with less. Um that's not a sustainable program or government. So.
Do you want to add, I forgot too earlier, um so wind ta- wind gets taxed on the the energy, the electricity it generates. There's a three-year grace period after it goes online. So we have two wind farms that have some property within our county, High Plains and McFadden Ridge, where we got three hundred and twelve thousand this year for our portion. Um I just added up. Um Converse County is several. Converse County for this wind generation tax got nine point eight million this year. This is all discussed to stay in the county general, but just three hundred and twelve. It doesn't have to be split with anybody, but just want to say that wind can be good. It's very good here.
That's right, was a good example.
We need the targeted property tax that you guys envisioned and did so well. Where does that appear? Whose budget?
The, say that again.
The property tax that was being tested that, my people who actually not like me, who didn't need the property tax, but somebody living on the margins, the two thousand, who whose budget does that appear in?
The far as the the refund program?
Yes.
That's in my budget.
That's it, okay. And so that is in here.
It is, yeah. It's like two hundred and sixteen thousand, I believe, but I have calculated in there.
Sounds right.
Okay.
Just want to leave it out, dude.
Well, yeah, um your budget directive was to, for me to leave that in there and then
Yeah.
that'd be like a last resort, uh to think, this is how I took it.
So does anybody else have anything that they?
No, I'm just impressed at how well the departments worked together and came up with a solution and.
It's very, very cool, amazing. So especially if you'd lived through the tears and the screaming and the yelling and the ranting and parking out of here. This is, we have, we're in heaven. We are so lucky. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody.
So we start tomorrow morning at nine. Um we go till noon. I would, Amy wants to talk a little bit about one percent.
Maybe do that now.
I mean, we're here if we'd like to talk about one percent. Uh. Please, I know what you're talking about. So uh this is for the community partner funding. Last year um I kind of changed it up a bit. It was just kind of be discussions between the three of you and I felt that we probably needed a little more documentation as to why, if we ever get questioned. Um I reached out to the city last year and modeled what they use, uh which is a worksheet. Um and each individual one of you gets to kind of score them yourselves and then we average that out. Uh last year, you guys allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the community partners. That does not include airport library and fair.
That comes out of.
Those come out, those are kind of, we treat them a little separately. We still put them on a contract, but we just treat them a little separate. So um I believe I gave you guys all this worksheet prior to the um presentations in March, but we didn't have a dollar, we didn't have a dollar amount that you would allocate. But just so you guys could kind of see it, make notes on it if you guys chose to. So what I would like to find out from you all today is how much do you want to allocate to community partners this year? I know, it's a tough question.
We need some jeopardy things.
Because once we get that, um then I'll have you guys do the same thing if that's, if you guys are comfortable with that, is complete each worksheet yourself. I know earlier today I did ask you guys, we had uh seventeen nonprofits that did not complete that report. You guys did approve the template letter that I'm sending out by the end of the day today. Um so they have till June thirteenth. So whatever you guys kind of decide, I mean, you don't even have to make a decision today, you can sleep on it tonight. I would like a decision by the end of this, these work sessions as to what number, because I think these ladies need it for the rest of budgeting. And then after the thirteenth, whenever we get, we meet again for budget, you guys can have these completed with that total dollar amount.
So I guess my only stand on the situation is we've asked the county employees and departments to take a cut. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask or to not continue that to the one percent partners. So if two fifty was the number last year, it'd be two thirty-five this year. Um and I guess my focus would be on, on direct aid um to individuals and maybe less on civic engagement. Um the money going to actually help community members at this point survive.
Yeah, so um maybe I'm in the one percent folder and there's an expended community one percent, twenty-five, twenty-six worksheet. Is that, is that what I'm supposed to be looking at?
No, so.
It's um it's in the one percent.
The spreadsheet Amanda has up is not in the, oh, is it?
It is. It's uh community partners funding combined. It's in the.
Okay, I got it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because that last sheet said we had four hundred and nineteen thousand expended in twenty-five, twenty-six.
That could be too. So in the spreadsheet from last year, we had, we did put airport, fairgrounds, library. So they'll eventually probably be in the spreadsheet, but again, we treat those three just a little different than we treat all these others.
Okay, so and then do we have, since we approved like uh Pilot Hill seventeen thousand or something from the rec board today, is that
No.
to be figured in on this?
No, that is a completely separate pot of funding, a completely separate request. That, that went to their hundred thousand dollar request that they asked directly from the rec board. They're only getting I believe forty-eight thousand dollars from FY twenty-six rec board, and that's why it asked for this addition, the leftover seventeen thousand in rec board, FY twenty-four, to just go to that project. Because it wasn't fully funded and rec board was very specific that it has to be something that they already have approved that just wasn't fully funded. And we have been fortunate enough in the past, rec board, usually when they fund something from the county, it's usually the whole amount of the project. So that is a completely different amount. This, um this is a different request.
Okay.
I believe this Pilot Hill request is for general operations. I'd have to look back at the application now.
And I did in the spreadsheet, I added in a twenty-five thousand dollar discretionary. We used to have where there was extra monies, if somebody were to come in later in the year and go, we're in need of some funds, is the county able to help? That we had discretionary funds that you could say, we have this amount, we can you know, fund this or whatnot. So I don't know if you guys, that's not on this spreadsheet, it's on the other one, but we can certainly, if you would like to do that, we could hold a certain amount. It doesn't have to be twenty-five thousand, it can be whatever you guys want. Um if you would like to hold a discretionary amount for that. Um I personally know I've been contacted by the FFA director regarding helping the kids with some funding to go to nationals. National FFA convention in October. She has still yet to give me any kind of dollar amount, so until I told her she can get me a letter or something reflecting to the commissioners. But I don't know, like that would, could that fall under the discretionary funding? I don't know. You know how? But I don't know, like that would, could that fall under the discretionary funding? I don't know. You know how the. Project graduation used to come at a different time. Now I think they're finally on the right schedule where they're doing it through the one percent. But there is stuff that comes up throughout the year with these nonprofits that maybe they would need something, but.
Right.
Is it usually somebody, uh, I mean, based on previous experience that was already applied previously, that's already on the radar?
Not always, no. I mean, like, like I said, project graduation, they were always just on the off.
And we, we have.
I.
I, um, reached out.
And what we tried to do, if they've asked for it on an off, you know, on an off time, we've always said, if this is something that's ongoing. Request it through the one percent, but like the FFA kids, they don't know that they're going to go to nationals until after.
Well, and they don't know they're going to have so many.
Yeah, and so I think they have like twenty-one. I think my niece said she has to twenty-one thousand dollars for each kid. I can't imagine that that, it's that much.
Well, but, but.
But I don't know.
You do the airfares, all the meals, their rooms, it's, and, and it's very expensive in that.
Hundred.
Yeah.
Maybe.
On average, when we send somebody grant wise to any travel, it's usually about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Katie told me, I'm like, that seems like a.
But I could be wrong.
Yeah.
How many days?
I don't know how long they.
Oh, it's a week.
It's a week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She probably means twenty-one hundred. Yeah, because she says everyone has to raise twenty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand?
Well.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was like, wow, that's, I don't know where you guys are staying at, but.
I'd like to, we need to maybe work on this a bit because.
Yeah.
A first year nonprofit could come in and ask for a hundred thousand dollars, right? And I think we should have limitations on.
Oh, I agree.
One year to five year, five year to ten year, because you might just be pouring money down a hole. I mean, and then also when you talk about this FFA. If they, I'm sympathetic to it, but what if a basketball team wants to come in and go to a basketball camp, right? How do you?
Well, there's a difference there. There's a really big difference. And the difference is, is that FFA. Gears all of these kids to making a living down the road. And they have really strong life skills that they get out of this to be contributing members of society. And that's the difference between a sports team and like the FFA now. And, and four H is the same thing. They're all learning life skills to become good, solid citizens. And, um. I will mention that, um, one year they were trying to raise money to go and, um. This was, this was quite a few years ago and they were raffling. Beef off. And so one little girl had a, had a life crisis. And so I told her I'd help her. So I went to sell her tickets and I did go to the, um. County attorney's office to see if anyone would like to buy tickets in there. And they go, yes, we will buy tickets because we don't ever see those kids. So they're in a, in a group that's. They're not, they're not being cycled through and needing all the social services that a lot of other. Instances do. And so there is a difference between basketball and FFA and four H.
Well, in your mind, I mean, uh.
Well, it's not in my mind. That's an absolute, absolute proven fact, Pete.
No, I see. I've learned a lot of time, spent a lot of time on athletic builds and feels like I understand a little bit of life because of that teamwork. Discipline, all that stuff. I'm just saying, you tell the general public that and somebody will go, well, that's great. Yeah, I, I agree that you agree with that, but I might not. And then how do you limit community partner funding from that? I don't see if there's a clear line.
It's clearly clear to me.
So.
So I, I think I understand where you're coming from and I think it's this, it's, we have these. Events that maybe are happening or things that are maybe not happening every year. I mean.
We have one time asks and we have recurring.
Yeah, it's like fundraising and one percent, I think are. I think is what you're saying is totally is, is different because they may not go to nationals every year, depending upon, they might not have a team to go. So. It, they're doing fundraising to go to an event. It's not a, like these one percent funds are ongoing community needs. These are, so I don't, that's why I'm saying, do we want to put a discretionary fund, maybe aside that says. This is for the ones that come in for the basketball team or the FFA team that comes in and says, we need some funding for X, Y, and Z. Do we want to do that? And maybe those are separate from, and maybe you cap it. Maybe you say, we only, you know, for each agency that comes in or each team. We don't go over a certain amount or, or whatever you guys want to do, but. Well, I think we have some things that happen throughout the year and I, and we're not, maybe we're not consistent with it and maybe we need to be more consistent with how we do.
Well, and that's why we did the scoring, the way we did the scoring last year.
Yeah.
Then there's some consistency.
Yeah.
Let, but before you guys go too far, how about we, eh, may I propose allocating two hundred thousand dollars for what we have in front of us? Taking the six percent off the two hundred and fifty thousand, um, to reduce. That funding to match what the county's been asked to do already. And then using thirty-five thousand dollar contingency or. Need assessment throughout the year instead of earmarking it. If it doesn't come up, then we can re-introduce it, um, to next year's. Requests. Um, and so if it's not allocated, then it gets, it, it, it still goes back to the community. It's just a year delayed.
And you guys might want to discuss a little bit about what you think that contingency fund needs to look like in terms of how you. And maybe it's just on a case by case basis. I mean.
But that would certainly address a one-time ask or a necessity that may not, an unforeseen request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine with that and I'm on board with that. I just see people, organizations coming in one time and then just asking for the moan.
Yeah.
Um, and then. So you ask for the moon, you get half the moon.
Right.
Right?
And there was one.
Thirty years.
There was one like last year that came and they huge, they asked for a huge, huge amount. We've never seen it before.
Right.
And Christian goes, all right, so I've spoken with, um, a couple of different city council members and. They have the same frustrations right now, as I believe you all do. And I am supposed to be meeting with, um, Sharon Cumby. In regards to the current application to get it altered. It's outdated. It needs to have some of these rules in there that, you know, if you are a first time applicant. You need to be reasonable in your house or whatever we decide, um, but it is something on my list to get done. Prior to, that's going out in January again next year. Um, so hopefully we can address some of these things on the front end moving forward. Instead of you guys having to just go in and cut them, if you want to cut them, whatever you want to do.
Right.
But, uh, you know, during this time next year.
Well, I know you had some thoughts on reimbursing fuel too, uh, for some, one of the organizations where. You said it's much easier to figure out how to get them fuel for their vehicles than it is to.
So Laramie, uh, so Upton Center, we do already do the fuel with our, our fuel. Um, Laramie Connections, we, it depends on what they ask for. So if they ask for fuel, we could do some things very similar that we do with Upton Center for them. Um, I have had just a cou- just a couple, not a lot, because we did put. This on a reimbursement method, just like how we have majority of our grants is on a reimbursement. I did have a couple reach out and said they can't do that. They don't have the cash on hand to do that. We've made special arrangement, arrangements for those. Um, but if it's some, if it is Laramie Connections, then we could do fuel and said, okay, go get the fuel and we just, you know, dock it off. And it, it is, it's a great way for us to help them, no actual cash out of our, our pocket. Um, but we can still help them and we would then still allocate a certain amount.
And they're giving the benefit of our bulk fuel price.
Correct. However, I don't think Laramie Connections, I don't believe they ask for fuel this year. I think they're asking for money for a vehicle this year.
But anybody requesting funds upfront, you are, you, you're perfectly aware of that. That's already been disclosed. This isn't, uh, hey, we need, okay.
Yes, we've worked it out there. And, um, yeah, I, I mean, when we, we put them on agreements for a reason. Um, we make, we do the report for a reason. I mean, these are, it is a grant. It really is. And they should be treated like a grant, just like we have, our, all of our funding is treated like grant and we have reporting, we have agreements. And they are taxpayer dollars. We just want to make sure they're doing what they say they're going to be doing with them.
Well, we need to be transparent with that. I agree with you too, Bailey. I think we were a little too loose before with a lot of people just to. Take their money and do what they want with it. And when we're at being asked to track those funds and know where our money is being used for. Because people want to know as taxpayers where our taxpayer dollars are going.
Well, and then we also, uh, one of the agencies this year, there's like six dollars left over. They're not going to use it. Okay. Well, if we would have just given them the money, what would they have used it for? Now we get to keep that six dollars. So they're not going to use it. So I think in the end it's going to save us, you know, six dollars. Get a gallon of gas, I mean, maybe two, depending on what it is. I mean, so it can help us in the end to collect any of those leftovers that, yes, we want you to do your project. So here's somebody to do that project, but if it comes out under budget, we do want those funds back to be able to then help other organizations next year. Or help ourselves because we are in need of it, whatever it is. So. If we were wanting to forward the two hundred thousand and then the thirty-five thousand contingency. I'll have, make sure Brady updates those spreadsheets and I'll get an email to you guys. Does that sound good?
Cause I mean, the numbers.
Agreement?
Budgetable, but I think that's. Yeah.
I think that's.
Satisfies the immediate need or the requested need and then provides a contingent for, um, something.
And any contingency at this point will be coming to you all. It will not be in, it will might not be my office's decision. It goes to you guys.
And I think we've done that.
We have, there's, um, like some budget changes that my office deals with. Um, as long as it's along the same scope, but other than that.
And that might, some of the more iffy requests, once they find out it's not just to come in, you black check.
Maybe they won't.
Well, we thought that would kind of help last year, but it didn't seem to.
You guys need to know too, you don't, if you don't want to allocate to a department or to a nation, you don't have to. So.
Right.
All this is, is that, you know, you don't have to give a dollar amount on the spreadsheet that Bailey's doing. You.
You can put zero.
I mean, if you don't want to fund them, you don't have to fund. I guess is what I'm trying to say. I just want to make sure you're aware that you're not obligated to.
Mm-hmm.
Give them money.
Well, I want to, at the grant summit when I was, I was at in April, Brady and I got put in a room with a bunch of nonprofits. Not really sure how it happened, but it. There was quite a bit of. Nervousness about we're not getting as much funding from our local governments, um, as we have in the past. And I said, yes, you're not. I would say, because look what's happening at your local level. What is statutory required that we have to fund? So there, I, I mean, we'll see kind of what happens next year too, but. It is something that I think they need to be aware of too, that these property taxes is a trickle down effect. It's not just at your local levels. Going all the way down to that one single person and it is affecting everybody. So. But I'll move forward with those amounts and we will, uh, get those sent out to you.
Ted, would you and Terry, would you allow, if I lobbied for higher contingency amount, like fifty grand, it's a very difficult year in the nonprofit world. The downtown clinic will not ask for that money at all. Um, and you just have my word on it, but there are places like B D Mary Valley that, uh. Have Americor Vista that have lost all their Americor Vista, uh, people. So that was about the positions. Now I'm not advocating for them. I'm just saying that world has come, um, to them and, uh. There's a likelihood that many might not appear on our bill for.
I, there's just a ton of them and I get it. It's, yeah, no, I.
I don't.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's going to the community. I, we can always justify it. It's impact to the community. We can always say yes or no. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't, no, I was just throwing out numbers and based on.
Yeah. If you did two hundred thousand and then fifty in the contingency.
Then it'll be the same amount that was awarded last year and still.
But have, yeah.
Yeah. That way we don't have to rebudget it. We.
No, that's, I mean, based on wind turbine impact, that's, we, there's, there's funds, uh, yeah.
Um, I also went through your guys' budget, the commissioner's budget. I asked you guys to, I just did it myself, but just so you know. Um, they burn, I took out, um, then let me see what else.
Whoa, 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 interns get paid now?
Well, we had a paid internship, but she hardly made anything. So there wasn't much expenditures in there. So I took that out. And then subscriptions, I don't, I think the twelve hundred, what's it Bailey? The twelve hundred, uh, twelve hundred dollars was for, what was that? Who was the, uh?
The I C L E I.
Do we still want to continue that? If we don't, I'll take that out.
I have no idea what it is.
Uh, international.
Something.
Is it one of the newspapers that?
No, those are all free.
Organization.
Those are all free. They did help us with a couple grant applications.
No.
Neither of which were funded.
Oh.
They helped you with them.
They did help. I mean, they do have some of the data that's required by certain, um. But I think, uh, Christian goes, I signed with the.
Yeah, I can't remember what it's. It's a clean energy renewable resources, uh, organization.
I'm okay with that coming out. I'm looking.
And then I dropped down the office supplies to five hundred. I mean, really, you guys don't have, I'm not sure even what fifteen sixty-one is out of there right now, I'm sure. But I think we're okay there. I push, I, I put CISP down to eighty-five thousand. Normally we have budgeted a hundred. It stands for capital improvement, special projects. We've used it for anything like if somebody were to come in. A year and needed something, we could take it out of CISP. If you want me to put it back up to a hundred, I can. I just figured. We could push that down and then I did take out bonds because we won't have any bonds this year. We won't have those till next year. So, um. Other than that, your guys' book, it's pretty straightforward.
Um. I do have a county board. Karen?
Excuse me? For equalization. I left it at a thousand. Do you think it'd be more than that?
Um, I don't think so. Just pace for the hearing, the court reporter, the reporter and the.
Oh, we're probably going to have to up it though, I bet. Can you, Amanda, tell me what?
It's just one.
I know, but I, I'm just trying to figure what the court reporter and stuff cost looks like in twenty-three, twenty-four. We've spent in those two, oh, sorry.
I would love that now. I was going to ask you.
Cause I'll up that back up then. I left a thousand in there. I wasn't sure because we didn't have.
Yeah, sure.
Now, do we know what they do?
Sorry, for one BOE. For one BOE hearing for your judge and for a court reporter, it's probably, I mean, we usually do. Not more than a half a day. I would guess your thousand dollars is pretty close, maybe fifteen hundred, but I would guess not much more.
Okay, cause one way I think. Trying to see then if we had. I mean, I can leave it as a, at a thousand if we overexpend it as long as we don't overexpend us that, it will be fine.
And Jennifer, if you didn't see that, you just scared the hell out of me.
Sorry, your screen, because you're sharing screens, the video screen is tiny, tiny. I can't see your buttons.
I know why we overexpent your office supplies. Your guys' book that we have to put your minutes in is thirteen hundred dollars for one book. We have to hold a physical record at the minute, so.
So we still have a book that is rack mounted?
We have all, we have them all locked in the vault.
Okay. And it's thirteen hundred dollars for this sucker that?
Just for one, because there's a lot of places that don't make them anywhere. I hope, I hope that they'll go away from Afghanistan to do that. We also put those on Arca Search too, so they're all digitized. Um, but that's what that expenditure was. Amanda, look it up for me. Okay, so that's, that's your guys' is. I mean, we have this scheduled till four, five. Do we want to go over general accounts while we're all still here?
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to open up general accounts?
Yes, no.
Might as well get the rack killing over.
Well, that would be fun though.
We're already here. We might as well, right?
Or.
I know.
So let's see. So we were able to decrease unemployment. Compensation by half. Amanda confirmed with me that that's fine, right? It should be.
Do you have a folder? All this is in, is it in?
It's in the. It's under, uh, commissioners.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's see here. So Waco dues, your WCCA dues are actually moved to your county commissioner budget. So that's in your commissioner budget. Um. I don't know with this, I don't know if this, that's, so they bill us for the, uh. Oh, verse index in the county. They must not have billed us. Okay, well, we'll keep it in there just in case they bill us this year. Uh, county warrants, we were able to decrease that because of the fact that we.
Print.
We buy blank check stock. Yeah, cuz we all have blank check, check stock now, it's not printed on, so it's cheaper. So document destruction, we're able to take that ten thousand out. We are going to buy a shredder. So the shredder and the service contract. Are, um, came out to twenty one thousand dollars, so that's. That's the, the cost of the shredder plus a five year contract, so, and that's all parts and service, everything for five years, so. We're able to get.
Forty two hundred a year instead of ten grand.
So you were paying ten grand in pro, in document destruction a year?
Or more.
No, I think this is great.
So we're gonna go forward with that, Bailey's got the invoice there.
Yeah, get the Enron two thousand.
The postage for the meter, I think Tracy takes that out of direct aid, gets transferred.
Is that, that's in this building wide, not countywide?
No, it's countywide.
The library and.
They do their own. Some of the outside departments. Don't bring their mail here, but they, hopefully, they're taking it out of this account.
Yes, they do.
Would you, Kurt, could you pull that door closed?
Thank you. We have our gasoline and diesel, so if, if we wanted to, if we needed to offset. Tracy and I were thinking, maybe we could pull some of that out of wind money if we wanted to. Could you push that button?
It's a magic button, it's.
I knew it was gonna happen, but. If we needed to, Tracy and I were thinking we could pull. Right, which one are you on, I'm sorry. I haven't calculated with, uh, direct aid right now, but we can shift things anywhere if we needed to. So it's gonna kinda, we're all gonna kinda have to wait to see where the chips fall, I think, and if we have to. Shift some money, we could always pull it out of that unallocated wind money. Um, let's see here, auditor contract, that's obvious, um, up your lease. Trying to think if there's anything. Utilities, we did decrease the utilities. Just because of the expenditures from. Last year's.
Does this include, um, the beach street? It doesn't?
Comes out of seven nine zero.
Beach Street comes out of, it's the rent that we collect from Beach Street.
I know, but their utilities are.
Oh, I know.
Comes out of their rent, yeah.
Yeah, that's insane, though.
The rent a month is, I'm just, as a curiosity for myself, you know, like, why don't they pay their own utilities? Why do we pay them?
I have my hand raised this time. So in their lease, it is currently that we pay that, however, their existing lease expires on September fifteenth, which they're aware of. And they had talked when we did that lease renewal about purchasing the building or doing whatever. We have not heard anything yet. But when we go back into, if we go back into lease renewal for that, we absolutely will be adding. Them paying their own lease or their own utilities amounts in that.
Yeah, that's, that building should, is nice enough, it should be on a triple net.
Grant building when we started, so that's where we were stuck with all of this, but no, it will end up as a triple net lease when we renegotiate this lease.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, can we add on that they also pay the property tax on that building? Because right now the count.
That would be a triple net.
Yeah, that would be added in with the triple net part.
Oh, gotcha.
That or I'll raise the rent high enough that we pay the property tax out of it.
Yeah, no wonder they wanna stay in there.
And then we increased the medical insurance to three million. Amanda and I did that? There's gonna be a rate increase. Well, and we're already at where we've spent, you know, two point three and. I think we need to obviously increase that. We've already got the bills for L G L P, our peace officer, crime insurance, all of those, so these are exact. But they're all due July first, so.
So L G L P, and these are actuals, these aren't S, okay.
If we've got bills for, so. And then insurance deductible, um, I think we're okay, but every time we have. To do a claim on a vehicle, we have to do a claim. It's a five thousand dollar per incident deductible. So it's a lot. So it's great to have insurance, but every single incident you have that you put towards the insurance, it's over five thousand dollars. We have a five thousand dollar deductible, so.
Is this warm or is this L G L P?
And I think, I don't, cuz L G L P has liability, so. I mean, warm is, it's property. It's, most of it is vehicles. Or any other. It's mostly vehicles, let's just put, put it there, that's what most of it is, but. One of the things with warm, also, we usually pay the library and the fairgrounds upfront for them on. When we pay all of it, and then we deduct in, in one twelfth increments from their mill levy distributions. Um, I do know that there is a request, I believe, from the library to pay their warm from one percent. That we were gonna, we have a note to ask you about that, cuz I wasn't sure, cuz we've got it at the bottom here. Because if you pay from one percent, then I need to take it out of revenues as well.
Tracy, if mill levy is going, if mill levy is higher than the number you gave me. Then I wouldn't. Then you, that.
So, we're already, when do you present?
Tomorrow.
Okay, but. I'll have Charlie have everything, that's what I'm trying to get to. So right now, we have it coming out of. Down there at the bottom, where we pay it, and then that was our question on. Amanda and mine, we weren't sure Tracy how that worked with the library and the fair board on theirs. Because they, of course, we own all of the equipment. I mean, we own all the vehicles, we own all the buildings, so. It comes through ours and then the library and the fair pay their portion of that. So if you go into the commissioners revenue, it's up. They each have a line item for warm reimbursement, oh, commissioners revenue.
Oh, my golly, they're right there.
Yeah, so she's got it in the revenues. And that was their last year's numbers, cuz I did not, I just got the new numbers for this year from Amanda today. Um, so the last would be, my commissioners is intergovernmental. We might update. I know, that's what I'm saying, I haven't been doing too many things at one time.
Okay, stop.
Which one? Oh, I do, sorry. So this, and intergovernmental, we pay for the I T support for the city over it, um, for the L R C. Public defender comes out of here. We added in the public defender office rent, so that's a new line item there. Um, the juvenile court appointed attorney, the G A L, that comes out of here. Is it the juvenile diversion program? Um, I think this was the fifty thousand he was talking about that we took out of here.
Yeah, this is what we cut.
Yeah, this is what we cut.
Cuz that's paid for by.
Correct, and then, uh, the L R C communication, we pay for a portion of their budget. We've already, this is the estimate that they gave us for this next year. And then the I M H involuntary committals is the one seventy five. Jennifer indicated that, um. She didn't think it, we don't normally expend that full amount, but there's a chance that we could and nobody wants to get caught. With their pants down, so we budget the full amount so that we don't get stuck not having the lady pay for it, so. Um, I think she said, what, eighty thousand, she thought. Yeah, a couple months, she thought there was probably gonna be another bill for that, so. That's what comes out of intergovernmental. As you can.
So you think there's gonna be another eighty thousand out of the?
No. No, she, it, right now, I think she said that eighty thousand is what was expended out.
Seventy eight, okay.
I anticipate, sorry, I anticipate that we'll probably return at least eighty thousand. I got in, I got in from, an email from the lady at, her name's Andrea at I M H. She said there's no invoice for this month, so we'll get the one for June, like usually by the third or so of July. And we can add that one in if we need to. I think it gets added into this cycle. If not, it goes to the next one, but.
Yeah. So there is all of the commissioner accounts. The only other thing we could go over while we're here is the one percent in direct aid. Do you wanna go over that, or do you wanna wait till you know your numbers a little better, Tracy? One percent is barely. I mean, where it's gonna be. Um, direct aid is. Anything else additional? Or different transfers? If you have any questions, just ask please, sorry.
Just trying to stay on the right spreadsheet.
Yep. So one percent. You can see, so the first one, I don't know if you want me to go line by line here, if you just wanna look and if you have questions. I think we increased I T infrastructure by s, to sixty five. Uh, Kate, I think the E M A sirens maintenance, we were able to bring down from ten to seventy five hundred. I decreased my Arca search from seventy five to twenty thousand. That does the hosting fee and then. That might be where. Let me check on that, cuz I might not need that much end either, so we might be able to decrease that too. It's down there.
Tell us to do your microphone.
Maybe that was to do the microphone, I don't even know what that cost is. So I guess you guys can decide if you wanna keep that in there, if you wanna take it out. I can either do my microfilm this year, I can take it out. That's up to you guys. The library has their one percent. She'll talk about that tomorrow, but we just put everything in, of course, as a request right now. And as you can see, her L G L P and warm is in here as well. And that's where we had a question, I think, Tracy, wasn't it? If it was double. Well, if it, if we pay it through one percent, if it's granted to her, then we would. Bring it, pull it out of here, not collect mill levy reimbursement for it, so it would no longer be a revenue. So it's gotta be one place or the, let's be one or the other.
Yeah.
Okay. So rent, taxes, utilities, this is the. The twenty thousand, Amanda, is this for the building? Yeah, so we increased that, what Kurt had talked about with the increase in the rent, so we increased that. Um, we control, uh, we invest as we control every year around the county. They request eighty five hundred. I think they've consistently asked eighty five hundred. Uh, Lindsay did wanna let me know that if we needed to make that cut, she was okay with it, but I told her I was gonna leave it in the budget until I was told otherwise, so. Um, I'll leave it in there until I'm told otherwise. Let's see. We did not budget anything for miscellaneous uncommitted. You guys will have to decide if you would like to do that or not. That's another, I'd say pot of money, but another set of money that things get paid out of that come up throughout the year. And, and maybe we need to look at putting all of that in one place rather than having it in. Three different places. Maybe there's a reason why they're in three different places. I look over at Tracy. Um, which, well, miscellaneous, we have, you know, miscellaneous uncommitted, then we have C I S P, and then if we're gonna have the discretionary in one percent.
Is there different reporting standards for each?
So the one percent optional is pretty much open use, and then I think. With C I S P being capital improvement and special projects, I think that defines it to be what the name is.
I mean, we present for non-capital improvement, though, that's the problem, I think, is that it was named that, but I'm not sure that it's always been.
It's in the general fund, so I mean, it's not.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the general fund, so there's not really any restrictions.
Yeah.
On it.
I think, I think originally. This could be trying my memory.
I know, mine too.
That miscellaneous uncommitted was kind of designated as your discretionary that you're discussing going forward. That, you know, those one time assets, like, I mean, you know, like F F A needs money this year, let's take it out of miscellaneous. It's become, I think, more than that.
Yeah, I don't know, it might be just a discussion as in tracking purposes, maybe it's just easier to come out of one, but I, I don't know.
I feel like sometimes we're trying to track down so many different accounts, it's like. Did, it's the new software, we created a new fund for the community partners, which would be a distant one. To your transfer into their whatever amount. Which will be helpful.
Yeah.
Then maybe, like you said, some of these might be rectified, but whether you guys wanna allocate some money to that, I left that open for you guys to decide if you wanna allocate money in there. Fair board, we put in their thirty five thousand dollar ask for operations. We put the two hundred and five thousand in at the airport, asked for. And then all the continuing education for all of the departments. I put a continuing education for commissioners in there. You guys have never had one.
Maybe, they did.
Well, they, they always, there was, there was usually not money in there.
It was.
Was there? There you go, look at that. See, I started last year, cuz I thought it was a good idea, so. There we go, I continued it this year. Public health, I don't know, it's gonna, asking for any, some funds, I guess not.
She saw the, she had a grant that's actually.
I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Do you guys have any questions or have any wants or to add into anything? Strategic planning, there was money in there for that, we did not. We didn't use any of it. Don't know if we want to. I know that Bailey, I know that's a thing with grants, but I don't know.
I don't wanna do anything until I know what the heck's going on. I don't wanna waste our money.
Do we ever give ten grand for that way of finding?
We did.
Yeah, but they were trying to make a mistake and say that we were, we offered forty thousand.
Thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did the ten, we just cut that check the la, in this last run.
No, 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 we only said ten.
No, no, I just don't see it in the expenditures.
It's under.
Wayfinding.
Greenwood, Greenwood mapping, the wayfinding.
Yeah, but it's zero dollars expended.
Oh, no, this is budget, the expended's right here.
Oh, your spreadsheet might not show, and Amanda's updated a bunch of the expenditures, maybe, I don't know.
If yours is an old copy.
Cuz it just got paid, just this last run, so yeah, that is done with, so. But if you guys have any questions or. Wants, asks, do you wanna put money in for miscellaneous uncommitted? Do you not? It's so much, and you don't have to decide now, but just maybe something to think about.
And could you tell me again what that's for that, that isn't covered under C I S P or. Building contingency or.
Let's pull up what we've spent. Whatever you can.
Whatever you didn't.
Plan on.
We've used that fund a lot.
Yeah, actually, I used all of it.
So it was. The hundred thousand to pilot, when they asked for their funding to help, because they didn't have enough to cover all of their um, project right now, so that came out of there, but historically, we've used it for yeah, all kinds of stuff.
Some random road bridge stuff, some random parish stuff, some random.
It's really been projects where people have normally come in and asked, or if we've had an expenditure that we didn't expect on, and we didn't have somewhere to take it out of, we took it out of miscellaneous uncommitted.
Yeah, well, it's been used quite a bit, and I'm not sure why we, why, why I would go to say zero, 'cause it's used now, if it hadn't been used for years.
Yeah, no, it's, it historically gets used every year.
There's always some. It seems like it, you can always go.
There's always, I was gonna say.
Where can we get money for this, and then it, it's this or this, and.
And the nice thing about it is that you don't have to amend the budget to use it, it's 'cause it's already budgeted, and so it is that, it's that good place where you can pull from something if you don't have anywhere to pull it from, so. It may not get fully expended each and every year, but whatever is remaining and left over turns into cash on hand, which just rolls it, you know, stays in there anyway, goes to help other things in the following year. So, if you would like us to just plug the hundred thousand back in there as a placeholder, and then.
I, I think as many cuts as the other departments have had to make, might as well cover our bases.
And make sure that we can cover if we have to.
'Cause that's that's gonna be the biggest issue, I don't know, the, the amount, I don't, I don't know, but I think we need a contingency.
We can throw it in at a hundred if you want, and then we can see where it all kind of.
Well, it makes it easy, or if we need to get.
Yeah. And then the.
That's what I thought, I thought.
But we didn't know what those numbers were.
I thought Bailey sold thirty-five hundred.
Uh, I think.
That's what was in her other spreadsheet, just saying.
Well, you can put one seventy in there. That's what we did last year, isn't it?
Yeah, somebody's.
Some amount of economic development. The airport is not on the community partners worksheet that this is linked to, that. Who's that, that, the totals? 'Cause it has the five hundred and sixty, one sixty-four, and then to the right, it has four twenty, which is two hundred and fifty thousand plus one. What's the formula, I don't know.
We should have thirty-five thousand out of the Pete Lane, I can't remember, last year for airport.
And you wanna do the same?
Yeah, once. Yeah, where the airport right now is in both community partners and the, here, so where do you want it? Here?
Probably.
Never mind, it's in last year's.
That's last year's.
Nevermind, it's not.
Oh.
You're good.
We took it out of there.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. So you want thirty-five thousand in the economic development, or? Thirty-five, I think, is.
You could do thirty-five thousand again out of the mean economic development? If you would like to.
I don't have a preference, I'm just. I'm trying to check formulas. Missing dollar.
Just trying to figure out what they're talking about. So one seventy out of the economic, out of account seven ninety?
No, no, thirty-five. So one seventy would come out of one pers- or out of one percent.
Okay.
And then the thirty-five would come out of this.
Economic development.
Economic development, but the Pete Lane economic development. Those two pots of money that comes into the down street, and then the money that comes in for Pete Lane is two separate accounts. And then we have the four fifteen fund.
You're gonna have to tell them where to find that.
It's right at the bottom of that, it's on the same spreadsheet, in one percent, it's just on the, on the bottom there.
'Cause it's four thirteen?
Four fifteen. So if you go into the one percent direct data.
Yeah, it's just a tab.
Just on, it's a tab at the bottom there. It's the IT fund. And that's where we moved a lot of our very, all of those ongoing licensing and things, so that we could make sure, Adam tried really hard that if it was a three-year contract, to try to build that out, so that we weren't looking for money, you know what I mean?
Sure. Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah, so.
Especially if we're getting a better deal with three-year purchases.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so. I don't know that any of those.
My eyes are about shot.
I mean, that's pretty straightforward. Um, I mean, they're all contracts, so you're kind of stuck in there, but I think the Bamboo H R, of course, may change, I don't know, depending on, if Anisa finds out with that.
Oh. I mean, can we have a short tail contract, you know, is that going away?
Will go away, but it can't yet.
Okay, so how much do you think we need to budget?
I don't know, I had to play our phone and play the pad on both.
Okay.
Until we get more people.
Should we budget it at the same amount that we had before?
Probably. Don't think it's gonna be any cheaper.
Does it need to go out a year, Ben?
Well, we can't, the phone system is going to be.
Anisa raised her hand. Anisa?
Sure, so I've reached out to Bamboo H R to find out what our monthly cost would be roughly for about six months. Oh, I think that'll get us through all of our initial setup and, and give us time to move everything over to Tyler, so we could discontinue that contract, hopefully December thirty-first, we have moved to a monthly contract with them rather than a prepay for a year. Uh, and I've reached out to them and asked them what our annual cost would, or, excuse me, our monthly cost would be.
I'm sorry. With the three year. Very well, could, we might not have to check into the short tail with Ben and see, it's like it might have been paid for three years, so.
It's like it's through twenty twenty-six, year twenty twenty-six.
So it might have already, so that might have been why we did.
Think that, oh.
We can tell.
Well, speaking of short tail, though, do we have new phones in the budget? If, end of life on the existing system is?
So we won't. The strongest contender we have right now, we wouldn't have to replace all the phones.
Okay.
Just the last one.
Just the ones that don't work with the new system, okay, alright.
Good answer, good answer.
Ask a silly question.
A lot of our early old phones won't.
So if it's SIP compliant or compatible, then you're. You might get one anyways.
I know.
You can send it straight to your desktop, and you can just dial on your desktop.
That's not what she likes to do.
She'd just save the county two hundred and fifty bucks.
Yep. So there is, in a, not a nutshell, um, quite a bit of the departments, of course, like I said, we have Marle. To go through all the departments, and then I imagine it's probably gonna be a matter of Tracy and Sunny and Amanda, my sitting down and making sure we've got everything in, everything we discussed, and then um, it's set right now that we'll go have our, um, public hearing on the thirtieth of June, 'cause we like to approve our budget before we spend our money. But I would imagine maybe we would wanna set another work session. We won't do that here, but just in talking, I think would probably be helpful once Tracy can get more solid numbers, of course, her, so up near the expenditure side is easy. But it gives us a chance to sit down and make sure that we've got everything. Everything connected, all the spreadsheets and everything, but maybe we could do a work session a week or two before the public hearing, and the approval of the budget.
So you think it'll be done by noon tomorrow?
Uh, I think, because we were able to get through the one percent and stuff today, other than the community partners.
Well, uh, no, 'cause.
But we don't really need to.
And, um, then they'll go in and score their own, but also we're waiting for those reports, maybe until the thirteenth.
Yeah, so.
So there's nothing really to talk about.
So we can chat, maybe we'll, maybe our best bet is maybe to have a work session after the second meeting, and just do a work session after the commissioners' meeting to kind of, 'cause we'll have to advertise the proposed budget.
Seven days.
Seven days prior to the.
Thirty.
The thirtieth, so the twenty-seventh. I can't remember what date we.
We would have to, we'd have to advertise it like on the.
Well, we can't, because they don't have a paper on Monday, it'd have to be on the twentieth.
Do they have a Tuesday on them?
Nope.
I don't think so.
Oh, so then we'd have to do it Saturday the twenty-first.
Yeah, so the, actually, meeting after the meeting, or the regular meeting on the seventeenth would probably be the best, so, um.
'Cause then we'd have to have it paid on Wednesday or Thursday.
Uh, if we're advertising it on Saturday, it's Thursday by three, I think. Yeah, so, um, I would think we could just, we'll just schedule one, a work session after the regular meeting on the seventeenth, I'll add that to it, and then. But I think we should be done then tomorrow, I added those, but I don't, we need them now. So we should be done by noon tomorrow. 'Cause I did put tentative on the weekly calendar for Wednesday afternoon and Thursday, 'cause I wasn't sure, 'cause we didn't have anybody scheduled, so. So, nine o'clock tomorrow? Yep, okay.
See everybody at nine o'clock. Well, most of you guys we won't see, 'cause you're already done. Unless you just.
It's really entertaining.
You know, it, it's so nice, because this is not torturous. And when I first came on as a commissioner, this was torturous. So thank you again.
Thank you, everybody.
Our stuff right here.
Yeah, 'cause it'll get locked up, and you can turn off the.